See, here's the thing, though, we would prefer to have negatives. I mean, you don't love a negative, just everything is a negative. Passives are bad.
Yeah, same to us, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I want that, I want this.
Is there a place?
Can I hear you? Um, yeah. Oh, no. How are you? I'm over here, like, I can't even see out of my glasses.
Yeah, it's warm.
You deserve, you deserve, you earned it, Liz. You'd be a little hyped.
Yeah, I got, I got my.
Oh, my gosh. It's good thing I left my house in time.
Yeah, right?
I gave it electronic in the parking. So it's a little late, but.
Yeah.
And I thought.
Cause I was like, everything seems a little. That might do it.
It is what it is. No. But I know what I'm looking for. I'll pull up my phone for the other.
So when I go, I don't know, we lost him.
Is it something that? Pardon? Is it something that I can get to on my?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Oh, are ya?
Yeah, I'll be fine. I've entered the whole day.
Nick, can you hear me right here? Is that? Can you hear me here? I was trying to keep my computer behind my microphone. So I probably need to bring it around. Is that better?
Yeah, it's better.
Okay. Testing. You just hear what? Is it, is it okay right here? Okay.
Does she know?
Oh, so. Did Landon know we were meeting here?
Let me see, she, hopefully she was on the email that Diane sent. That said we were.
It's a lot to remember. You know, I can just imagine coming in new.
And, oh.
But you know, with the soccer game, I usually pop out in the back and I was like, a lot, I just took her out.
I know, I sent an email yesterday.
I'm gonna be up there.
Okay.
I know, I'm really just open my emails to read them, but.
I open them, not always at the right time.
Interviews. Oh, okay. I'll tear them out and put them with my notes from other. For vacancies.
What's that?
My notes.
Oh, yeah. I did all mine in the, um, my.
I have yours somewhere. I have yours somewhere.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I'm worried about Lorraine. I was sad, I went to watch them.
Okay.
Do you know what?
Often, what happens?
That's funny.
Yeah, I do too.
I'm a little worried.
I think it's just, she texted.
You have her?
No, I just. I don't know. Do you have her number? I don't either.
Education is a whole.
I feel like we should have it somewhere.
Shouldn't it be by the? Okay. Hopefully. Okay.
Everything's okay.
Hi. Good evening, uh, welcome to our board meeting. It is April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. It is, um, a lovely day out. We are so happy to see people here, uh, in person and also welcome to anybody who is watching at home. Um. We, we will be having our new board member, she's on her way, she's had a little family emergency. So she's on her way first. Um, I'm gonna have my board members introduce themselves, we will start down here with Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Sean Wilson.
Hello, Lauren Christensen. What do you mean, this is Unipromtrixid.
Good evening, Patrick Keo, thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening, Doug Brooks, thanks for coming out tonight.
All right, Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff? Good evening, Monica Merritt, Superintendent, welcome for, to everyone that came to join us in person this evening and for everyone that, that is watching remotely. Like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, and thank her for taking our minutes and making sure that she keeps me on track every single day. Diane, I appreciate you so much. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Ms. P S.
Hi, I'm W P S, I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer, welcome.
Good evening, Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources, welcome.
Good evening, Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, hello, everyone.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer, welcome, everyone.
Good evening, Kurt Tiscuitz, Executive Director of Student Services.
All right, we are going to do the pledge as a reminder for people up on the stage, watch your head, the screen's a little low.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty, just as well.
All right, we are at letter A. Uh, adoption of agenda, approval of consent agenda, action item twenty-one oh four fifty-seven, I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda in the consent agenda, action item number twenty-one dash zero four dash fifty-seven.
Thank you so much, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
All right, uh, has been moved by Member C D U and seconded by Member Brooks. Uh, adoption of the agenda, approval of consent agenda, action item twenty-one oh four fifty-seven. Would you like to take us through the agenda, please?
Yes, President McQuine, this evening, the consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since the last time we were together. We have new hires, leaves, resignations, and retirements, as well as tenure recommendations for your consideration this evening. We also have the approval of the minutes from the special meeting on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, the regular meeting minutes from March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and the special meeting minutes from March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Finally, we have first readings of policies five one one, one eligibility of resident, non-resident students, and policy five one one three point zero two, school of choice options provided by federal law.
All right, thank you so much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, uh, the agenda, adoption of agenda, approval of consent agenda has passed six zero, that's your Vartanian Gibbs.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me? Good evening, everyone, first, I would like to introduce you to some new teachers in our district, and I'm thrilled to introduce you to them. First, Bethany Compton, you can stand up, Bethany, just like a teacher. So Bethany is our COVID nineteen support teacher at the secondary level, she has been subbing in our district for quite a few years, so she knows our district well. We're very thankful she applied for this position. She comes to us with twelve years of experience and her degree is from Eastern Michigan University, welcome, Bethany. Next, we have Jennifer Johnson, Jennifer's not here this evening, but she's returning to Plymouth Canton Community School, she worked with us for four years. She is our new math intervention teacher, she is going to be working at Field and Hoben Elementary School, and she comes with eight years of experience. Next, we have Margie McCoy. Welcome, Margie, she is our new elementary counselor at Erickson Elementary School, she comes to us with ten years of experience. She has a bachelor's from Michigan State University and a master's from Wayne State University, welcome, Margie. Next, we have Alyssa Parkinson, Alyssa worked in a public library for decades, and she decided, I wanna be a language arts teacher. So she is now a language arts teacher at Liberty Middle School. Um, she, her name is Alyssa Parkinson, and she has a bachelor's and a master's degree from Texas Woman University and an M A plus thirty from Northwestern Michigan College, so welcome. Thank you so much for choosing Plymouth Canton Community Schools, and we are thrilled you are with us, congratulations. Okay, next, I would like to, um, congratulate Roberta Jarzuski, she is a teacher from Liberty Middle School, Language Arts. She has been a leader in our district for years, um, and she is retiring after thirty-five years, so congratulations, she goes by Robbie. Robbie Jarzuski, we are so happy for you, and thank you for being a champion for so many years in our district. I also would like to congratulate Brian Loody, he is an elementary teacher at Field School, he's been with us for over twenty-five years, and I would like to thank him for his service. We wish only the best to Robbie and Brian as they begin this next journey in life, congratulations. Next, I would like to share with you a teacher that we're recommending for tenure, she is not with us this evening, but she is our elementary A S D teacher at Tonda School, and her name is Amanda McNamara. And here's what Dave Turle, the principal of Tonda, has shared about Amanda. Amanda is a consistent support for the students in our multi-age classroom at Tonda School. She collaborates effectively with an entire team to make sure she provides the best educational experience for her students. The well-being of her students is always at the forefront of her thinking, and she is a tremendous advocate for them. She seeks out relationships with families to better understand the individual needs of each child and works tirelessly to meet both their social and academic needs. Amanda is a great asset for our school and our community, so congratulations, Amanda McNamara, on receiving tenure in our district. That means you have completed five successful years of teaching. Thank you. Congratulations to you.
All right, thank you very much, uh, welcome to our new teachers, very excited that you've chosen, uh, Plymouth Canton. Um, and next up, we are at letter B, and it is celebrating success, and tonight, the presenter will be Sean Wilson.
All right, good evening, good evening. Guess we'll give a little time for the ladies to make it in. Once again, uh, good evening, tonight, celebrating success, this evening, we'll honor the Plymouth Canton Community Schools Nutritional Services Staff. The team was nominated by the core team on behalf of the entire district. Starting last spring, these dedicated professionals have been on the front line of providing meals for a community reeling from the COVID nineteen pandemic. This team provided meals in a year of great uncertainty and never-ending challenges, but through it all, they were able to distribute more than one million meals to the P C C S community. We want to recognize their efforts to not only provide meals to our students, but honestly, in many ways, to keep our students connected to the schools they love during a very difficult time. Joining us this evening are the meal program site leaders who are representing more than seventy members of the nutritional services team. They are Colleen Berry, Vicky Shonur, Pam Pollard, Lorna Trager, Jackie Navanti, Vicky Ackerman, Maureen Peruta, Debbie Bentz, Brenda Blankenship, and Gina Stanford. Please help me welcome Christian Hennessy, Director of Nutrition Services, to talk about the nomination of the nutrition staff in our district. You guys make a little noise for Christian.
Thank you, one of the things we've learned is we have to change masks when we know that our glasses fog up, right? Always have a backup. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to share about my team. First of all, I need to thank Superintendent Merritt and W P S, on behalf of my team, for trusting and always supporting, supporting us to do the right thing to get access of meals to our students. Where do I begin? I guess I could say, eh, March thirteenth, twenty twenty. That's old news. Um, this is where the groups were, this group was first named our heroes, they've always been heroes, but they truly were. But quickly, in September, they turned into our very own Rosie and Ron Riveters, cause definitely, I do have some men, so we call them the Rons. Like in history, we all know that the Rosies became very important. When there was a job to be done, they never said no. They, these, these folks were P C C S's frontline. I don't know if you know it, but they worked in the bookrooms. They worked in the heat to make sure that our students had books, so that when we started out the year, we were ready. They loaded cars in the heat, which they'll never forgive me for, but they did it. They were our touchpoint cleaners, so we could get off the ground. They have delivered meals with our incredible bus drivers from the very beginning, and I need to shout out to our bus drivers, because we've become very close to them. And some, some weeks, we've delivered over a hundred meals, no questions asked, to families in need. All while they still prepared meals for our students to receive on a weekly basis, doing those things and making meals. And still, one point two million meals. These riveters, as I like to say, are the best at pivoting, being flexible, changing on a dime, reinventing, and there is not a hybrid out there that they can't handle. In total, since September, and I don't know that I should even tell them this, they have made eighteen program changes. When I say one, one point two million meals, and we think about what, what was going on across America, there was crisis concern and need that hit this community. But my staff never missed a step, and were present every day in the buildings, to ensure that we were supporting education by making sure a well-fed child is a child ready to learn. So just so you get a little bit of what they did, I put them all in a basket, squished it all up, sent them out to these team sites, and they worked with people they had never worked with before. They met new people, they worked with new people. And what I saw from that, all the time, was sometimes I saw singing, sometimes I saw dancing, it was really good dance-offs. Sometimes I saw tears. But most of all, I saw a lot of people lifting people up on a daily basis. One of the things that I think affected my staff most was when the emails, the notes, and the personal calls that came in from our parents, that told them that the meal that they picked up or that they received gave a normal to their child that was at home. I never thought that a chicken nugget could do that, but it did. So my staff decided that they needed to give back more, who would have thunk that, they were already doing this every day. So they created videos, if you haven't been on YouTube, they're amazing. They wanted to let our student body know that they're still there and they're still waiting for them to come back. They put positive quotes out on social media, and they put signs up at meal pickup to make sure that our students knew they were missed. These are my Rosies. They're my site leaders. They are accepting on seventy other individuals who are my Rosies and a couple Rons. So you've introduced them once, I'm gonna say it again. Lorna Trager, Vicky Ackerman, Colleen Berry, Vicky Scherner, Jackie Navatney, Debbie Bentz, Pam Pollard, and Maureen Peruta. And so you all know, the people who keep me sane on a daily basis, they're behind the scenes, are Gina Stafford, Brenda Blankenship, Joanne Randolph, who's our registered dietitian, and Alisa De Santos. Thank you for hearing our story.
It's my pleasure to, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to present the members of the Nutrition Service Staff with the Mary Beth Carroll Exremiler Award. Uh, Lorna Trager would like to say a few words about the recognition on behalf of the team, please make some noise for Lorna Trager.
Um, as you can see, we are wearing our Rosie the Riveter t-shirts, as Kristin mentioned. Because what we learned over this past year is how many Rosies are indeed in food service. Because like Rosie, when we see something that needs to get done, we do it. We learn to work outside the box, we learn to work with people across the district, and we re-learned about the importance of a good pair of shoes. Yes, we're tired, but we're also very proud of what we've been able to accomplish, and that's why this recognition is so very important, so very special to all the lovely lunch ladies of the P C C S and all of Nutrition Services, so thank you so much.
And once again, congratulations to the Nutrition Service Staff, AKA Rosies and Ron, uh, for earning this esteemed recognition. Thank you for all that you do to help our students, staff, and families learn, prepare, and thrive every day, and thank you so much for your sense of humor and bringing positive energy to the room this evening, thank you again.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, the board also got emails, um, that parents did talk about how, um, having the school food and the lunches did bring a sense of normalcy to their day, um, which was really important, especially for the littles. Uh, we are moving on now to, uh, C, which is Board Committee Reports, Action, first up is the President's Report. Uh, so first of all, I would like to welcome our newest board member, Loretta Chastain, to our, the board. Um, if you were not aware, uh, she was appointed on March twenty-fourth, it was a really difficult decision, there were a lot of really good candidates, but we are really excited for the, um, the skill set that she brings to the board, and, um, we welcome her, and we really look forward to working with her. Um, last night, um, Anupam, Doug, and I, and Ms. Merritt attended with us, we did our first, um, parent forum, and we had about fifty people who showed up. It was a chance for parents to, um, give us some feedback about what they're looking for, for the fall, and then into the future. Um, and we'd like to thank the parents who participated, um, it was our trial run, and of course, there were some bumps, um, as always happens when you're trying something. However, we're going to do the, the same thing several more times, um, in an attempt to get to more feedback from community members. Um, so I will be getting, um, information out to the board members, uh, we'll be putting a schedule together, and then making sure the community has it. Some of the feedback we heard was that, um, it was, they, people didn't all get the information that we were having this forum. So we'll try to get, you know, several dates together, send that out, and then have people register for those dates. But it's not a one and done, we're going to continue to do this, after we do this several more times, and we will move on to another topic. So, um, I will also be compiling the feedback we got, and. So I will also be compiling the feedback we got and giving it to the board members. So that is about all I have to say for tonight. And we will move on to student performance and achievement with Anupam.
Thank you, President McCoyn. And I just want to clarify, we met via Zoom. So when she says we had over 50 people, I didn't want anybody to think that we were congregating. So it was via Zoom, and I want to echo what President McCoyn said about the parent participation. It was great to have them, great to have that conversation start up. For the SPA update, I'd like to welcome our new board member, Loranda Chestang, to our SPA committee. And our new community member, Sophia Saleem, who started joining us last week. So we had our SPA meeting, a regularly scheduled SPA meeting last week. We went through the first semester data. Because there was so much to chew on, we did not get to the NWEA data, which, so we're actually scheduling another meeting tomorrow at 4:30 PM to review the NWEA data, because we know that's important as it comes to full board. So we'll be doing that tomorrow. And that will be via Zoom. You can get the link on the agenda that will be posted on the website. I'd also like to remind everyone, our regularly scheduled meeting, the next meeting is May 5th at 4:30 PM. And the location information or Zoom link will be posted on the agenda. Thank you.
Next up is policy, and that is my committee. So our next meeting is April 27th. There is a time change. It will be at 5 o'clock. The board has a closed session at 6:00, and so we needed to move the meeting a little bit earlier. One of the things we will be discussing is we currently have a policy that outlines graduation requirements. And one of the requirements is that juniors must attempt the MME during their junior year as a requirement for graduation. We're going to be working on removing that totally from the policy, but for this year, we will get a resolution to waive it. So that nobody needs to worry about it for this year. But that meeting will be here. And anybody in the public who is interested is certainly welcome to attend. Next up is finance and operation.
Thank you. We met last Thursday, the 8th, at the board office. And we discussed a number of different items that you're going to see come up on this evening's board meeting on the finance and operations section, including the custodial key performance indicators, the, the furniture and playground equipment that we're ordering for the elementary school additions, and a number of other purchase recommendations as part of that process. Our next FNO meeting is on Thursday, April 22nd at 5:00 PM. And assuming that there is no order from the governor that requires us to close, that will be in person at the board office. And we welcome the community to attend if they so desire.
All right. Next up, we have Educational Excellence Foundation, and we have Gretchen Ward and Tanya McCray.
Hi, good evening. I just am so excited to be here. This is my first in-person meeting with you all since over, an over a year. So it's wonderful to be back and oh my gosh, to follow up from the lunch ladies. I can't tell you how much my family loves them. I would drag my two kids to pick up our lunches when it was all remote, and it was, it was an experience for us all. And I just publicly want to thank them for all their hard work, because we've seen it firsthand, and it's been amazing. But anyway, my name is Gretchen Ward, and I'm the Executive Director of the Educational Excellence Foundation. I'm joined tonight by Tanya McCray, who is the K-12 Curriculum Coordinator for Science, STEM, Health, and PE. And tonight, we're just going to share a little bit of information about the EEF and PCCS's partnership with the Bosch Community Fund. Now, each year, the Bosch Community Fund makes awards to 501(c)(3)'s and educational institutions to provide project-based learning opportunities designed to promote STEM programming and make awareness to environmental sustainability. Now, over the last 10 years, the Bosch Community Fund has awarded $828,000 to PCCS via the EEF for these types of programmings. These figures include grants for PCCS programs and equipment, professional development for teachers, and our award-winning First Robotics teams throughout the district. Now, each year, the EEF partners with teaching and learning to submit grant applications for projects that enhance the current curriculum, but that also align with the Bosch Community Foundation's goals. In the past, these projects have included funding for the development of the STEM Academy at the park, bolstering middle school STEM equipment and supplies for their programming, stipends for elementary school, for all elementary schools, STEM program coordinators, and maker spaces in all of our elementary schools. Now, the Bosch Community Fund, the Bosch Community Fund is very receptive to our needs here at PCCS and is always willing to work with us to maximize our grant dollars and the most appropriate programming. They are very generous community supporters and has provided state-of-the-art STEM experiences for our students throughout the years. So I'm now going to turn it over to Tanya, because I'd like her to share with you a little bit about where our dollars went with this year and the differences that we had to make because of COVID.
Thank you, Gretchen. It's wonderful to be here in person with all of you this evening. It's so good to see people's faces. I'm excited to share the things that we've been doing with Bosch. They continue to be an amazing partner for us and for our students and providing excellent opportunities for us. The grant this year had an elementary component and a middle school component, and I'm going to start by talking to you about the elementary component. Okay, so as Gretchen mentioned, last year in the 2019, 2020 school year, we were able to put maker spaces in all 14 of our elementary schools. And to build on that, our original plan for this year was to then connect the maker spaces with curriculum in the classrooms so that the maker space wasn't a physical location that existed in the elementary school, but that it was used throughout the building. As you know, that, that was not possible for us to do this year. I pushed pause on that effort. And I met with the elementary STEM coordinators, and like everybody at PCCS, everybody came to the table with great ideas and ways that we can meet needs of our students and move forward. So we came up with an idea of providing virtual and in-person experiences, which we are very grateful that Bosch was very flexible and adapted the grant for us so that we could do those experiences. One of the things that we started with. Maybe, it's on freeze. Okay, thank you. I need a. Okay, with stories and STEM. So with stories and STEM, literature was used as a catalyst to engage students in engineering design process. And one of the books that they used was The Little Red Fort. And because this initially started out as a Zoom experience, both students in the virtual academy and Safe Start were able to participate together. The books that were chosen were chosen with a lens of equity, diversity, and inclusion so that all students felt that they were being represented in our stories. This particular story involves an updated version of The Little Red Hen, where she's building a fort on her own, and she needs to learn it all on her own. And the students then followed up by designing and building forts in their home and going through the design process of like the iterations in their forts and then sharing them. And we have a few more right here. Students were not required to share what they made in their home. That was completely voluntary. So if they weren't comfortable, no problems. Okay. Once students were in school, we were able to transition and also offer stories and STEM as an in-person experience for students who are able to use materials in a safe socially-distanced manner. This is another story, Everything You Need for a Treehouse. And I love that the students making the treehouses chose many different materials. It wasn't, oh, they weren't trying to copy something. They were using their own initiatives. But STEM challenges were also offered to elementary students, K-5. This one was building a tower as high as you can. And you can see that some students chose to participate at home, both indoors and outdoors, and some students were able to participate in school, socially distanced, of course. And that brings us to our middle school. And one other thing I want to say about that is that adult members of families were reaching out to our, our elementary STEM coordinators in sharing the joy that their students were experiencing building these things at home and sharing them with other students. So it's a really, like a bright spot, like there. On the other component was a middle school component, where we, our goal was to increase coding experiences for students at the middle school level. Students K-5 have coding experiences, and then when we come to the middle school, we really wanted to bolster that because we now have a computer science STEM way in the, within the STEM Academy at the park. And we're not always sure that students really understand what computer science is all about and what does it entail. So we would like to give them more experiences at the middle school level and encourage more of our students to choose that pathway if they feel it's right for them. So our goal was to have coding with, built into our electives, such as the 21st Century Skills and PBL. Unfortunately, because of staffing needs, like we needed to staff a virtual academy, we needed to reduce class sizes. The teachers who had been trained to do this were then needed, because we always, we step up when we're needed, needed to be in different places this year. So our goal for next year is to come back to that. We do have this taking place in one of our middle schools. And it's been a very positive experience. It's worked well, both virtually and in person and going, and having to transition back and forth. So that was some good information for us to build off of for next year. So we continue to look forward to working with Bosch, working with EFF, to, EEF to continue to provide experiences for our students. Thank you.
Any questions?
So I love the programs that you were doing. We see, and we're going to see on the presentation here tonight about the summer school program that we're doing, and I saw that there was a coding camp there and a number of other activities. Are those related to the work that your, your team is doing?
They are. We're actually reaching out to the teachers who are trained in the code.org to be a part of that. So that's in the works.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Thanks for your time tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are now on to letter D, Administrative Reports and Recommendations. First up, we have the Superintendent's Report. Ms. Merritt?
Thank you, President McCoyn. And I'm going to share what you already spoke about in terms of your community forum. And I'm going to tell your fellow board members that these three just laid the gauntlet down, and they are setting you all up for a challenge. They set the bar so high on their community forum last evening. It was so well-run, so well-received. Just really took an opportunity to do some visioning, which I was so impressed with, to say to our families, where do you want to see PCCS in the future? So having families have that opportunity to kind of talk about lessons learned through COVID and looking at the world beyond COVID was really, really, it was very inspiring for me. So I thank you for that work. And as I said, whoever is next to do that community presentation, they truly have set that bar high for, for the board. You know, I always love to take an opportunity to brag about our incredible students and our educators, and it never gets old to see our students working so hard, either in person or remotely, to learn, prepare, and thrive in different ways. Tonight, I want to highlight our music program. This, as we know, we have an incredible music program from elementary all the way through our high school. And they have inspired students to find different ways to find their own voice and be creative. And although this pandemic has changed the way music is taught and learned in PCCS, I am here to tell you, it has only strengthened the commitment, creativity, and innovation of our amazing teachers. Representing the innovative nature of our amazing music teachers, I want to share a video performance clip sent by longtime orchestra teacher Kathy DePinto from PCEP. And this is our concert orchestra. This is our youngest ensemble at the park. So in lieu of live concerts, the group has been performing virtually this year. And I'd love for us to just take a few seconds to celebrate these talented young students and their accomplishments. Thank you, Mr. McCray. And we all know that music is a universal language, and our music and arts programs have been so important to our students during this time. So we just want to thank our teachers and our students for allowing these important programs to continue to thrive during the school year. This group is preparing for an in-person outside presentation on May the 11th. So we're going to make sure the members of our community know how to tune in to support our student musicians. I want to give a shout out this evening to our robotics students. They are celebrating that, I'm going to say the PSEP Lightning Robotics Team. This is, like our music groups, they've found new ways to pursue their own work during the school year. The team was recently named one of only four teams from around the world that is out of 3,075 total teams to qualify for all of the competitions with original submissions in the first robotics competition. Two of the groups competed in semifinals this past weekend, and more results taking place later this month and in May. Program leader Jay Avsnik is particularly proud of the performance of the Innovation Challenge. This inspires students to create a solution based on a current global issue related to first theme this year that is called Game Changers. So PCEP students submitted various ideas for projects that were related to improving mental and physical health, which is so timely right now. And the team landed on an idea of a hearing device to alleviate PTSD revision. We're so impressed with their amazing work. And as you can see, it represented in our students not just competing to the highest level, but truly working to make a difference in the lives of others. So we're so proud of them, and we thank our, our teachers for their leadership for that program. I am going to now revert back to a few COVID-19 updates for this evening. As you are all aware, we've been monitoring the significant surge of COVID-19 cases in our state, in our county, and in our local communities. And on Friday, we heard from Governor Whitmer and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. They were recommending at the time that school districts voluntarily suspended in-person learning activities for high school students as well as youth sports. So we've had daily discussions, and after a thoughtful deliberation, we did make the decision, as I shared to our families, to our communities this weekend through a newsletter, to remain in person this week while we continue to monitor the COVID-19 cases and transmission data in our school to just see if there is an adjustment that is warranted moving forward. We are operating, as you know, on a modified schedule this week based on, at the secondary level, based on state testing. And so this is allowed for reduced density on our campuses. When we look at our sports program, we did communicate that we made the decision to pause our middle school girls' basketball program for one week. That is the only program that is currently performing indoors or participating indoors. And we allow the spring outdoor athletic program to continue. And just wanted to take that time in line with that recommendation to give that indoor practice or pause. I believe they have one week left in their season, which is next week. All of our athletes, as required by MDHHS, participated this week in their first week of testing. They have to have weekly testing. So we are, we did have a slight glitch in the system with our testing source this weekend where the servers went down in Washington DC. So they had to go and redo their registrations and by hand, but they're working through that. But I will say that as of today, I did not have a report of any middle school students from that athletic program that tested positive. So that is a good thing. So we'll continue to monitor that and hopefully be able to reengage them in their sport next week for their final two games. We are continuing to post our positive and probable cases, as well as the two weeks' worth of data for our close contact quarantines, and that comes up every Tuesday. And again, we are actively monitoring all cases to help inform our decisions. And so I would just share with board members, what we talked about on Saturday was an opportunity this week to monitor and looking that tomorrow and possibly Thursday, I'll make sure that I reach out to each of you individually with an update. Just as of today, we've been back now two days. We have five staff members as well as 229 students identified as close contact quarantines. And once again, working to get caught up on the athletic cases. They were not on the daily sheet that I reported to you today, April 12th, but those cases will be on the sheet tomorrow. And once again, make some decisions as we move into the end of the week if we need to make any adjustments. I will say overall, while our students are attending in person, they are following their mitigation strategies. You have a report this evening when you're looking at your survey results by Dr. Lance. Our students are wearing their masks. I know we've had, every decision around COVID-19 creates different reactions within our community, and that is definitely understandable. And, and some of the thinking that we will find that decision to stay the course this week. When we look at even CDC recommendations, the schools really should be the last place that closes. And as this recommendation that we respect coming forward is is looking for voluntary pauses. As everything else around our community still remains open, what we see is that our students are actually able to follow the mitigation strategies. But being more compliant when they're here in our buildings and we are still not experiencing high transmissions within our building. So, our mitigation strategies are continuing to work and we want to try to stay the course in-house as long as we can. The biggest challenge for us, as you hear as board members, as people see on social media, is supporting our students in close contact quarantines. I continue to make sure that I'm trying to message that that livestream, although that is a very valuable tool. It is something that is not required due to contractual language. But our teachers have a range of instructional practices to support kids that are in quarantine. And we want to just make sure that we continue to communicate that. Ms. Compton, we welcome you on board this evening and we already have hired 1.5 additional COVID-19 support teachers. So, they will be available to provide live instruction throughout the day for our students that are in quarantine. Our teachers as well, some are allowing for the livestream, others are working after school to provide live Zoom interactions. And this weekend, our chief academic officer, Ms. Rail, sent a communication out to all families, just trying to get some consistency across the district with the COVID-19 support button that is now up and running on each of our teachers' pages. So, they'll have that opportunity to really personalize within Canvas some expectations while students are in quarantine. So, still, we know that this continues to be a source of stress for our students, for our families, for our teachers as well. I continue to ask for grace for our teachers. I want everyone to respect the professionalism of our teachers and know that they will work to find the best match to support students. And I also advocate for grace for our students because many are very anxious during this time period and don't want to miss school because they feel like they're falling far behind. And so, know that we will get through this challenging situation. So, with that, before moving on, I want to just stop and pause for any questions that you may have for me this evening.
How are you doing? Okay. So, Monica, thank you for sharing the information. And I just want to repeat the questions that we've been continuously asking. When we have close contacts that happen inside the school and we have to quarantine students as part of that. From a, one of the key things for us is whether we're seeing spread, are those close contacts coming down with COVID?
So, you're asking that?
That's a question. I mean, that's.
Yes, we are still experiencing low cases of transmission in the classroom. We have experienced outbreaks and that is considered two or more cases that are epilink through our athletic program. And so, that, and those are, I will say, while we were indoors, we were experiencing those that are currently listed on the state outbreak. Now that we're outdoors, we are seeing that when the team is quarantined, we have not experienced that same degree of transmission in athletics. So, I think that that's a good sign. But our mitigation strategies are still working within the classrooms in terms of not seeing that transmission. And we've had, I think it's three cases that we've looked at that were suspected cases of in-school transmission since this school year began. One elementary school and two middle schools. But for the most part, even in this surge of cases right now, where there are absolutely a high number of cases throughout our community and daily cases within our buildings, we are not seeing that transmission. I do want to take this moment to just shout out our nurses. We talk about them every single board meeting. They are doing an amazing job with our director of school safety, Josh Meyer. They are on the phone, working with buildings, supporting our students, our families through close contact quarantine tracing. I think in particular with the surge, even the health department has asked initially for our help. But right now, we're doing a lot of that how that work in-house. We talked last week of that ability. You know, we've lost some of our nurses to other opportunities. So, bringing in additional nurses. So, we finished the interview process and we'll be bringing forward for your consideration once we finalize some new recommendations to replace some existing positions, but also strengthen that workforce. And also looking at just restructuring that a little bit more to make sure that we're taking care of the overall health, mental, social, emotional, and physical throughout this COVID pandemic. So, that is to come, but I just wanted to make sure that I shout them out because some days, as you hear, even with our food service employees, our nurses are in tears, are, you know, at the same time, there's such a commitment when you look at managing the cases, but also the consequences of the social, emotional, and mental health challenges of kids not being in person. So, they're truly committed to this work to make sure that we're ensuring, doing due diligence, doing this contact tracing, making sure we get students on quarantine that have been less than six feet for greater than 15 minutes to ensure that we continue not to experience high transmissions within the school.
Okay. So, just, I know you gave a lot of additional context. That's very much appreciated. We're not seeing our mitigation strategies that we're doing in the classrooms are working. With the exception of the three suspected cases, one at elementary and two at middle school, we're not seeing transmission in the classroom. And I think as you talked about the nurses, we have the capacity with our staff right now to keep up with the contact tracing that's required to do that.
We have at this point, but I will tell you, it is getting, it's getting tough. So, when we talk about our human resources and right now that ability, we're working to develop COVID-19 response teams within our building. Because what's what happens, the nurses, if they're handling a case, and although we're not required, we're only required to do a case notification letter. But here in PCCS, our staff wants to make sure that they are available to parents to talk directly. So, they're making phone calls and understandably, a phone call could last 30 minutes. And if you have 15, 20 kids that are close contact quarantines, the nurses are recipients now of questions about attendance and plans for academic support. So, working with the building teams to provide additional hands to accept some of those calls about attendance and school so that the nurses can do just the contact tracing and working with the building administration. But it is taxing and that's why we're looking to say, how do we restructure, get additional supports in place that can handle that high level of contact tracing safely?
Okay, thank you. I have other questions, Patty, but I'll let other board members. Go ahead. Okay. So, when I look at the quarantine cases that we had for last week, the week after spring break. That number was lower than it was the week before. It was 556 total quarantine cases last week plus the 229 that we have this week. And with the new 14-day quarantine period, we have more than 800 students that are out of school right now. And my concern is about the sustainability of us to be able to do that. And I know that those are just the ones that are identified as quarantines. We also have families that have been concerned and have not come to school. They've kept their kids home. What is our absentee rate that we have right now? What is the total number of students that we have out of the school right now?
So, I don't have that answer, but I can get that answer back to you. As a part of the metrics committee, what we look to make a determination is when we're looking at overall attendance and that includes kids that are out for quarantine as well as families that are choosing to stay home. Really, when you're looking at pupil accounting in a general year, 75% counts as a full day. So, we use that if we get to a point where we have a total of 25% of our students that are not attending, that would be a trigger to a conversation to say, do we need to move that school into a remote environment? The highest average that we've had at the highest times is about 15%, which is high. That's a secondary metric. When we look at elementary, we look at classrooms and we really look at greater than 50%. So, if we are experiencing students that are out greater than 50%, that's a time to trigger that conversation as well.
Okay. Ultimately, my big concern is is that we have a lot of people that are not getting educated right now. And I know that our teachers are doing their best, but that we have, we have no guaranteed education for all of those students in this process. And that gives me really big pause. I'm very pleased to see we're not seeing spread in schools. But I'm very concerned about our ability to sustain this process with the number of students that we have that are either not coming to school because of their own concerns or that have been quarantined as part of this process. In many cases, having no fault of their own.
Yes, I do want to clarify that it's not that we don't have education provided. And so, that distinction between live instruction, which is definitely key and has caused stress on families. But I definitely just want to make sure that we're ensuring that there is education being provided for each of our students that are there. Not the degree that we know in terms of managing expectations and consistency because we have different experiences for different students, which I know has caused concern again. But I just wanted to make sure, clarify that we are making sure we're educating our students even when they're in this remote space.
Thank you for that clarity. The last question I have related to that is, what have we done for those students and the expectations that they have set on them? My understanding is that if you're out on quarantine or you're out sick, you're still expected to make up all that work and to complete all of those assignments, even though you may not be getting live instruction. Is that true?
Absolutely. It's just in terms of an absence, it's, nothing has changed with our ability to access work and be responsible for work. When I made that comment about allowing students grace, to your point of if you don't have that live instruction, is that more difficult to do? So, we have that window that is supposed to be honored to say if a student is out 14 days, just in a normal absence, they would have that amount of time to make up that work. And so, that's something we're still continuing to work on because the kids are coming right back from quarantine and then expected to take a test. And they may not have had that opportunity to get caught up. They should not be penalized for this. So, the policy in itself should allow for that amount of time when that student is out to get that support that they need and get that grace as they return. And we want to make sure that we strengthen that across our entire district.
Thank you. And if you can please get us the numbers for the number of absentees that we have outside of quarantine, that would be very helpful for the board.
There is a current board outstanding question from our last meeting. And we have not been able to provide that. It was the question around our attendance rate year over year, if you recall that from last time. Kurt may be able to help me with this question in terms of getting that information and working with Risa right now. So, we're still trying to work through that.
Yeah, I can expand on that. We have been working with a programmer at Risa. The way we report attendance to the state is is whether they're present or not present. We don't break it down by the type of absences. And so, we have have been, it's been a challenge to get that information out of our student information system. So, they have a programmer at Risa that is working on that right now. To Monica's point about looking at past year's attendance rates, what my star only holds is the current year. So, there's no way for us to say, okay, two years ago in March, what was the attendance rates? We can't go back in the system to to look at attendance, unfortunately. So, that's kind of a limitation of our student information system.
So, I will be able to satisfy this, this request from this evening. But that was, I know that that still is an outstanding question and I wanted to just give an update on where that is.
So, towards that end, does Risa have that information? If we're working with the programmer, is a lower priority task, if we ask them to provide us the information in the past year?
That I could check, but they are working actively trying to get the current data and the breakdown of what type of absences we've had.
I think that's certainly more urgent, but you know, if it's a lower priority task, if they could get us the information for the past year, that would be again, an important consideration for us because we did see a decline in our, in our engagement rate, especially over the last six weeks.
Yep, that's the information we're trying to gather.
Okay, thank you.
President McQuine, I have some questions.
Okay.
No one else does?
Go ahead.
So, a couple of questions. One is with regard to the COVID-19 support. So, I want to welcome Ms. Compton. Can you give us an update as to how many staff are in queue to be hired? How many more?
You hired 1.5. We hired 1.5 and they're in place working and we're bringing an additional person on board. She's accepted the position. It's she has to give her current district a two-week notice.
And with these new staff on board, how will the parents know how to reach out to the new COVID support teachers? Is there going to be some communication? Will they reach out to students or do students reach out to them?
So, I can speak to that. It's a combination. So, the COVID student support teachers get the list of the quarantined students and the students who are absent. And they reach out actively. We also have embedded, excuse me, into the COVID-19 quarantine notification letter that goes out from the nurses and building principals, a survey that also links to a Google form that is another layer that can be filled out by the families as well. So, we're trying to make sure that we're actively and proactively reaching out to the families as well as giving another layer of support where the families can also indicate some additional, you know, I'd like the COVID-19 support teacher to reach out to us. And then, the COVID-19 student support teachers are also reaching out and working with the classroom teachers to provide that level of support. In addition to, I also wanted to shout out a number of our teachers who are working after school to provide live Zoom sessions for our students. So, we have the opportunity and teachers stepping up in all buildings across the district to do that. In addition to their their workday, we have teachers who've who've reached out and actively worked with teaching and learning as well as HR to provide those sessions. And they've, I've been kind of in contact with many of those teachers and they're indicating that that's being a very successful intervention and support as well. So, we're continuing to look for and are always open to some more suggestions about how we can even better support students in quarantine. And we're trying to think of all the different ways that we can do that as well. So, again, ideas and suggestions are always welcomed, but we'll continue to seek out and think about innovative and different ways to reach out and support all of our students to ensure that they have the greatest access possible to their learning.
And so, will you be keeping track of data for students who reach out to the student support coordinators? So, if a parent asks, where was the support for my child, you can pull that up?
Absolutely.
Great. One other question, well, it's a question slash comment to what Kurt said about the data. Moving forward, is it possible to ask Risa to store monthly data for each year? And that could be set aside in case it's needed. I get that they are not saving year-to-year data for attendance. But I wonder if we could request to them that if they could by month store that data? And as we move on to the next year, we have access to that data if we need to go back to it.
I will certainly ask that question. Thank you.
I'll push it my way, too. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just just one question around how we'll we'll know that the quarantine learning is getting better. You know, are there some key indicators that that we can track and measure to to be able to see that, you know, the learning experience is getting better for the quarantine students? Is that something for the COVID coordinators or how do we gauge if the strategies that we're implementing are actually working or not?
So, that's that's good. We could have some discussion on true metrics. And we'll say anecdotally, your emails will calm down, but I know that that's something that you're hearing about daily in terms of that support. Looking also at our students' grades and completion assignments or working with our teachers. As we know, we're in that fourth marking period right now. So, seeing that completion rate. And so, we'll look, I'll have teaching and learning work together to kind of outline some more metrics to say, are these things that we're doing, that we're investing in actually making a difference in the plan and we'll report back.
Perfect, because I might know if we need to do another, you know, or add strategies on top of the existing strategies or if what we've done is sufficient or not.
Can I also say that we're also actively monitoring those numbers so that we see if we have to scale up those those numbers of teachers too? Because as we've just implemented this intervention, we want to continue to look at, do we need more? So, HR and teaching and learning are working hand-in-hand on this to to ensure that we're nimble and flexible. We have people in the pipeline and we're making sure that the the need is matched by the intervention that's put in place.
Anybody else?
I have a question, just a clarification, Superintendent Mayor, because I think I had a hard time hearing you underneath the mask.
I'm sorry. It's just, it's real simple. A trustee Wilson asked about metrics and how do we know the measures are working?
And was your response, completion, like that would be our measure of success if it's being completed?
So, yeah, and I said that we'll bring that answer back. I want to have the teaching and learning team in conjunction with the HR department really define what, how we're measuring to see if those interventions are successful and if we need more.
Thank you.
But I did also say anecdotally, you'll, if it is working, you'll receive less emails than you do on a daily basis.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. I had a question about if you were going, how would you know if you needed more people? But Ms. Ray, I answered that already. So thank you very much. We are now on to two, which is finance and operations.
Thank you. I apologize for the length of the agenda. First off this evening, on the last F and L meeting, we talked about the approval to purchase two maintenance vehicles. This is the purchase of a Ford. Three fifty to replace an existing. A vehicle we have that is beyond its useful life in a Ford F four fifty dump truck. And both these vehicles are beyond their useful lives. We've gone to the state of Michigan contract. For a state bid through Signature Ford. Both these vehicles together total one hundred and ten thousand five hundred ninety five dollars. This is a first read. For this, a second read to follow or final read to follow in two weeks. And this is to be paid from the operations general fund budget. We were asked to look at the bond funds. In order to identify whether or not this could be, those could be used for this purchase and based on the review of the election. Verbiage and the. Legal ramifications of using bond funds, it's not able to be used. So we have to go to the general fund for maintenance vehicles. Mr. Welch is here. If you have any specific questions on the vehicles, I'll be in front of you this evening.
All right, I'm assuming this went through F and L.
It did. And I just I just want to, on my copy of the agenda, it says we're going to do the custodial KPIs. Is that?
It was not. I mine mine too. The agenda is just switched on a little bit.
No problem. I just want to make sure that we don't forget about it.
Yep, it's next.
Okay, great. Um, yeah. Thank you. We we did go through this extensively in F and L. We talked about the state of the existing trucks. And that they were kind of rusted out and not worth repairing at this point. And that these are very similar to other vehicles that we purchased last year. Is that correct, Mr. Welsh?
Correct.
Okay. And so we were comfortable with this process. Our only discussion, our only main discussion point was whether how we were going to pay for these. And. Thank you for the update on the fact that we can't use the the bond funds for this. We can only use that for for buses is what the. Vehicles that we can do in the the bottom language.
Correct.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about this? All right, I'm not seeing any. So thank you.
And now we are going to custodial KPIs. And with us is Jason Dantus. CEO of GRBS, and I am going to let him start and then I will. Help and add and answer any questions you have.
All right. Good evening. Thank you very much. Good to see everybody. Sorry I missed you on Thursday. So these are custodial performance indicators. These are for the winter quarter. So just to review for those that have not gone through the presentation before, we typically compare the last. The current quarter that we're looking at with the previous three. This particular timeframe has some gaps, of course, because we had shutdown time periods during the onset of the pandemic. So we are looking at quarter two, which is the winter quarter of this year, comparing with quarter two from last year as well as quarter one. And we do an assessment. It's an inspection process that happens in the mornings. That is conducted by GRBS personnel as well as collaboratively with PCCS personnel, typically the plant engineers. And as we assess everything, anything with over a twenty percent variance is considered a hot topic to address. And our goal is to have all the categories under a ten percent variance. A couple of highlights from this particular quarter. So this was the second quarter of having the enhanced cleaning protocols in place. So we have a collaborative program. With the plant engineers, with PCCS cleaning assistants, as well as additional day staff from GRBS that are in the buildings every day. As well as this was also the the second quarter of the full rollout of our new communication program through the Google Docs system. Interesting to note, and we'll get to it as we track it, but even with additional higher levels of in-person. Some learning that happened during this quarter, we saw that the comments from the Google Docs did decrease. So that was one of our indicators that the program was working. As well as then in buildings that have modified schedules, not as much in-person cleaning. We were providing credits in cost reductions back to the district. To offset those things. So. Quickly, we will go through the different data points. First thing, everybody obviously is focused on is where we're at from a staffing perspective. This gives some comparison, average per quarter prior to the pandemic compared to this year. The biggest thing that stands out, of course, is that we are hiring about double as many people right now to keep our staffing levels up. And that we've got a high level of what we call no call, no show or unknown. These are folks that we have hired. They have started. They have worked. And then at one point or another, they just stopped coming. And we don't really understand why our HR team is really doing. Double duty like everybody to try to track folks down. We have an understanding of what's going on. The marketplace has shifted significantly since the onset of the pandemic. The most significant impact is its effect on wages. We've worked collaboratively with the district to find ways to increase wages for our staff. And we continue to see that push. So in the marketplace in general, for everyone that's competing with the same kind of staffing pool. Wages are up in some cases twenty to twenty-five percent from what they were even a year ago. So that's one of our great challenges. We also have a much higher level of people concerned. Or impacted by the COVID situation, specifically health related. So we monitor that quite specifically. And then our offset on top of the additional wages is we continue to. Come up with bonus programs, incentive programs to get people to come to work consistently. Getting staffed is one challenge, but our greater challenge, just like. The discussion that just happened here is the daily absenteeism rate and trying to make sure that we are staffing. So we have a variety of bonus programs to help with that. At the time when we finished the winter quarter, we had one hundred and fourteen custodial team members on staff. We currently, as of today, have one hundred and nine. We still have the equal amount of coverage, though, because some of those folks were part-time that left and we've had additional full-time come on. So it's a lower number, but the same amount of coverage. Again, the biggest challenge we're working through, which we'll talk about in the stats, is the absenteeism rate and how we accommodate it. So looking specifically at the data, kind of the quick overview I'll give for everyone is we did not have any categories that were under. Or sorry, over the ten percent variance this time. That was expected. I would have been concerned if we did. Mostly because we have most of the areas of the buildings that are being cleaned multiple times a day. Specifically common areas, touch points. Restrooms, those sort of things, not only by the night crew, but then also by that team of people there during the day. To maintain it in that four hour cycle. So. Everything gets cleaned in the building typically two or three times a day. And we're specifically focused on primarily things that are not. Focused as a health-related focus. So those. Categories that are not necessarily the health and safety related cleaning. Are the ones that we see a little more deviation because those take sometimes a little lower priority when we're cleaning. So for example, in the entrances. You see the entrance glass. And then the floor, dust and debris are our highest categories, walk-off mats. Those aren't necessarily an impact on health, so those kind of become the lowest focus. And we want to make sure our team stays on that. Particularly when we're working with a lot of disinfectant, too, you'll see a trend that the highest categories in each section have glass related. Because they do. They do leave residue and they do leave a film. Which obviously makes it appear to be unclean, but it is disinfected. So that was a trend we noticed. So I'll just quickly go through these. Another reminder, as it relates to office and media centers, is that this is a collaborative. The plant engineers clean the offices in the media centers and the secondary buildings the GRBS staff does. Generally speaking, again, this is another area that gets cycled through two or three times a day to make sure it stays up. And our highest category. Again, was the office, the walls and glass, again, which was impacted by disinfection. As far as the classrooms go, we've always focused on the floors. Floors, we increased specifications for the floors. So we're judging the floors on how well they are completely. Mopped and swept every day. This was one area that. When it comes, push comes to shove, our focus is on impacting health and safety, touch point surfaces and that sort of thing. So we did see a higher, you know, the floor piece being the higher category of areas that people would tend to not be as detailed. On a day in and day out basis as they're focusing on those touch points. As well as, again, impact of disinfectant. So working with our people on as they're cleaning surfaces, as they're doing the electro stack spray. And that does have an impact on the floors because it does leave a little bit of residue over time. We want to make sure that we're cleaning that up on a regular cycle. It's one of our focuses that we had over spring break. Cafeteria, kitchen and athletics. It's a similar trend. Scores are generally well here. They were not quite as active as normal, although they did. Kick up towards the middle and end of the winter. Making sure that the detail work in the kitchens and the detail work in the athletics stays a focus. But again, no categories outside of our target range. Corridors and stairwells are another specific area that gets cleaned multiple times a day. So things like focusing on our stairwell ledges and on the mopping and scrubbing of the floors kind of stands out because surfaces and touch points and all of those things are getting cleaned. Multiple times a day. And finally, our restrooms, again, another area that gets cleaned multiple times a day. You see our highest category, again, glass related, is it relates to the mirrors as we're spraying everything down with disinfectant. We do need to make sure we're rinsing off the mirrors to keep those clean streak free. But for the most part for this quarter, again, we saw all the categories fall within the range we were targeting. And then our overall scores, where we can see that the classrooms. Did have the lowest in terms of the scoring. And so we want to continue to focus there, but again, within the target range that we were looking for. So one of the things that we've asked to report on is kind of where our highs and lows are, where the buildings are that. Perhaps have had some struggles compared to the ones that were going really well. As far as the high schools go, we have pretty much a balance between all of them. Each of them scored low in in particular different categories. So in general, we we had good balance between the high schools. There weren't any that particularly stood out. Canton, this particular building was one that stood out consistently on the higher range. With some of the categories bouncing back and forth. Between Plymouth and Salem. And our middle school is the one place that we really wanted to focus on with our team building and getting. Settled into a routine was Pioneer. That was the building that we saw the lowest scores in. So that. Became a target for us to focus on with that team. And then in the elementary schools, we really found that there were two primary buildings, Tonda and Workman, that we were focused on. Trying to get some consistency. We had a lot of changeover in those staffs. So working with those teams to get settled. But we did have a lot, as you see, we'll have eight, seven, nine buildings that scored as best as they could in many of the categories. So we felt good about that. So I will look at the comparison of the Google Doc communication. So this is the recap of the first quarter. And where we stood. So this was the first official time that we had rolled this program out as a whole. For everyone to use, for the teaching staff to use. This was a change from the work order system we had in the past. Which was a little cumbersome and unfamiliar for the teachers to use. We worked with the teachers' union and the grievance committee, come up with the process of utilizing the Google Doc. The first, we did some trials, some pilots at the during the year last year with the goal of rolling it out full. And then, of course. Plans changed when schools shut down. So this year, full rollout, the first quarter, you can see kind of where the communication lies as compared to this quarter. So. This is the biggest thing that stood out right away is that even though the first quarter had mostly remote cleaning. Not a lot of in-person instruction, students on site, the staff obviously were, but not as many students. We had much more communication going on, much more communication of concerns. This quarter with a higher level of in-person learning, those concerns went down. And in fact. We see a lot more buildings that really had no communication, no issues that they communicated, and the ones that did a significant decrease. And you can see that this matches. Our inspection data. So when we look at these indicators, we're looking at these different points and comparing them to see what story it tells us. And you see Pioneer and Workman. Two buildings I mentioned that we are particularly focused on to try to get support for those teams. So the kind of the final piece we look at is where do people give us compliments? We have something called a WOW program, which allows our our team to earn some bonus monies just for having communication about their performance in a positive way. So this is a report on where we are at. The pace slowed down the first quarter. We did an eighty-seven Wows, which was a significant, it was more than we'd. Almost more than we'd had in a couple of full years we got in one quarter. Only up to one hundred and twenty-two, so the pace did slow down, but that's much more. It's still ahead of average of where we've been. So we appreciate all of the feedback. Ask for it to continue to come if you if you do have positive. Reinforcement for the team because that does give bonus money directly back to them. Appreciate everyone who's participated. So kind of an overall wrap up. Again, the full program, plant engineers. The cleaning assistants, the day assistants, cleaning a lot of these areas two and three times a day. We did not have any categories in. This quarter that fell below that ten percent threshold. The main issue, which I kind of alluded to, is that absenteeism is our biggest challenge. So. As I've talked to Rich, if we coordinate back and forth, it's not uncommon that a building. May have be cleaned by three or four different people throughout the course of the week because of people being off. Or because of a different situations. And so trying to get that day over day consistency is our biggest focus. That's where the Google Doc as an assistant, you know, the inspection is kind of a snapshot of that particular moment and that particular day. It certainly tells a story about what a building looks like day over day. In a certain sense, but at the end of the day, it is a snapshot. The Google Doc and that communication gives us a window into what did the actual staff experience on a day over day basis, what helps us to focus in on skill training and so forth. So that consistency day over day with a lot of more way, we're running double the subpool that we typically have because of how many, how many people are out. Filling in for each other. And so that's lends sometimes to things getting overlooked or things getting not quite the the same way day over day. And so I mentioned too, that even with that and additional in-person instruction. We moved forward in terms of reducing the Google Doc communication. We have nine buildings that did not have any Google Doc communication this time. And then we were able to look at the communication as a whole and find that we didn't identify that there was a specific trend. District wide that needed to be addressed just within those certain buildings that I mentioned. So that we focused on those teams and put leadership there to help them and give them a boost. So that is the recap of the winter quarter.
I'm going to jump in a little bit here to also give you a little more information. We currently have nineteen daytime cleaning assistants employed by the district to assist the plant engineers. With COVID nineteen mitigation strategies throughout the instructional buildings. The cleaning assistants work from eight to four, Monday through Friday at Allen, all elementary buildings and middle schools currently. The cleaning assistants focus on touch point cleaning, cafeteria cleaning and provide additional help whenever needed. We have heard many positive comments from all staff about the pride and work ethic that they have brought to our buildings. With the guidance of our plant engineers, our cleaning assistants and GRBS, we are able to provide a much quicker response time when issues do arrive. The hiring process is still active for additional five cleaning assistants to support the PSEF. One for each PSEF high school plus one extra to work as a district-wide substitute. We did interview three people last week. We've moved three of them forward. We're waiting on the three of them if they've. Accepted the positions. The plant engineers continue to make progress on their daily tasks as well. During the time when students were learning remotely, plant engineers were able to accomplish a great deal of tasks. Usually only performed in the summertime. Included but not limited to painting of hallways, classrooms, bathrooms, detailed edgework on stairs, hallways. And deep cleaning of carpets. Thank you. If you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to ask.
All right. Sean, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Lauren?
No questions.
Anupam?
One question on the slide that shows the highest and the lowest rating, if you could go to that, please. So I'm noticing in the low areas, Pioneer shows up a lot. Are you looking at doing something different at Pioneer?
Yes.
Staffing issue or something else?
Well, in that particular case, there was two things. The one is we did have a higher level of absenteeism in that building than normal. So a lot of substitutes were being in there in the supervisor we have there. So every middle school has its own supervisor. The supervisor were there, there wasn't doing the best job, I guess I would say of just making, you know, following up behind. When we have a lot of substitutes, one of this kind of SOPs is that then those are areas we need to be double checking, get an extra set of eyes on. We need to work on that. We need to work on that a little bit better as well as making sure that we have a clear plan. For when people come in and they're not familiar with the space, we have job descriptions in place. Just making sure we're sticking to those. So it's kind of a recommitment back to basics. The reality is with Pioneer too, we had, we did have a span, I don't know, it was about a two or three week span where. You know, it was kind of one of those perfect storms where we had three people leave and a lot of subs in there and it was a rocky time for, for a little bit. So we recovered and we got it straightened out, but it's still reflected on, on the score.
Thank you. I have no other questions, but I do want to thank you and your team and everyone that helps in the buildings to keep it clean. Thank you.
All right, Loranda, do you have any questions?
I actually do. First, I want to say thank you so much for the work that you do. It's because of the work that you do, many parents feel confident in sending our kids to school. So I do want to say thank you. I think it's more of an observation than a question, but I was looking at the slide that talked about the emails Wows. And that you all are like doing something new with the Google sort of platform to be able to communicate. And it seems to be a correlation between those schools that communicate regularly to the highs and lows. And so that it could be maybe a communication strategy as well, that in those schools that are scoring low. Maybe helping them to push concerns to the Google. Because it seems to be a little bit of a correlation, but thank you so much for the work that you're doing.
Doug, do you have any questions?
I know, I'm okay.
Patrick?
Yeah, a couple of things. Just to piggyback on what Loranda said. The Wows are a compliment in the process. And if you look at the Google Doc entries on the slide that's two, two ones before, that's the Google form. That was instituted and you actually see a strong correlation between Pioneer and Workman and the other schools that actually had scored low. So we see that strong correlation between. People saying this is a missed task. This is a trash that didn't get cleaned correctly. So it is a good correlation. But I was also pleased to see that even in some of those schools where we had. Low scores, we were still getting shout outs either through the Google form or through the emailed wow. Wows. And I think one of the things that's particularly important to highlight is on those low scores that we have. We created this process of highs and lows because we didn't want to get lost in the averages. We didn't want to have, you know, averages be okay, but you know, we have something that where a particular school is performing very poorly. That isn't caught in this process. And one of the things that's important to highlight here is the low scores. The lowest low was only ninety-one percent. So in past years, we were seeing schools that had sixty percent scores. So our lowest low is actually still an A in this, in this process. And that's a testament to the work that our custodians. That our GRBS team is doing, that our plant engineers, that the, our cleaning technicians are all doing right now, as we've seen a substantial improvement. In the quality of clean over even the same period, uh, two years ago, when, when we did the year over year, the. The year over year or period over period comparison. So I want to thank the, the entire cleaning team. That we're really seeing good improvements here and to echo the feedback from the other board members that this is good, good work and good process. So. I know that we've surged resources into this and we're going to have to evaluate that as part of our future strategy. But it's clear that when we have those extra resources, we can do a good job. We also discussed this extensively in the FNO meeting. And we asked questions about whether we're getting feedback from the teachers and the conversations that happen with the custodians and the. Actually, Rich, why don't you explain? Cause you're the one that explained it at the FNO meeting about the conversations that you guys have with the. With the PCEA.
Oh, so yeah, so Ms. Piaz and myself meet on a regular basis with Mrs. Fishpatrick and the grievance committee. And it's a great, it's a, it's a positive experience because we were able to share things. They're able to bring stuff and it's not even just that on a every week, every other week basis. The two ladies at the grievance committee are emailing me saying, hey, can you take a look at this? Hey, can you see this? So I think it's a very positive feedback that we have two-way interaction going between PCEA and, you know, the maintenance department. I think it's probably one of the best we've had in a while.
And so the point being that in the past, we'd had a lot of discontinuity between the numbers that we showed here and the perception. Of things in the, the, the community. And I don't think that that's happening right now.
No, and it's just, it just goes to show you that, you know, having the extra people were able to, you know, address things at a much quicker pace. And things don't linger. It seems things, things, it seems to be that things are not lingering. And it's like, oh, this is still happening, happening. You know, they bring us an issue, we get it addressed and you know, hopefully we correct it.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you. This was, actually the numbers look really good. So thank you. Moving on. Next up, we have members of our bond steering committee, particularly Derek Dinkaloo is going to do a short presentation. On EL one package for furniture that we're considering for our first read this evening as well. Well, there you go. Mr. Dinkaloo from TMP Architecture.
Thank you. Good evening. So the last time I was here, I talked about EL one, but I talked about the additions. And the renovations at Dotson, Erickson, Field and Holstein. So this evening, I'm going to talk about the, the furniture. Starting in January, we met, started meeting with. Groups from all four of those schools as well as district representatives. And in those groups included the principals, the student support coordinators, teachers and parents. As well as our, our design team. And with that, we were able to. Start making selections and, and we met with that big group twice and then with smaller groups of district. Administration and principals. Two more times and, and you know, there were, there were some other back and forth. Additionally, we had some of the furniture. Samples that district administration principals were able to look at and, and that really helped us. Narrowly in on durable. Strong selections for the, the furniture and just real quickly kind of going through. The, the selection, student desks. In the classrooms, these are individual desks with individual storage. A nice durable edge, nice durable construction. As well as, as chairs. For their, the student chairs. Classrooms will also have a, a, a small group table rugs, of course, for. For time on the floor as a group. Mobile storage. The, in the Erickson, Field, Holstein, mobile storage in all the classrooms. Dotson, in the kindergartens. And then new teacher stations. So, so those, those were the selections for classrooms. We also have some, some furniture for the offices. But at the end of March, we received all the, the quotes. There were seven dealers and each dealer handles different pieces of the furniture. And so we went through all those, those quotes, made sure everything matched up and. That came to a grand total of one million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, a little bit more. On a budget that was, was just under two point two million. So we did have, end up having a surplus on that of. Six hundred and forty-five thousand and about eighty-seven dollars.
Just to add, these are discussed at FNO and we did have several meetings. We talked about both the selection process. We hope that this selection process will then move forward as a standard for the district. And so as you know, we did do some pilots in the previous years. And so. We really want to thank all the members of the committee that helped in bringing this to, to you this evening. Including Dotson, Erickson, Field and Holstein principals and their staff's principals. Parents and PTO reps, teachers from those buildings that participated. It was a huge effort. They were Zoom meetings, just so everybody knows. And we came to this selection process. These are statewide bids. And so we took these different bids from all these different dealers. And that's what you have this evening in front of you as a first read in order to move forward next time for a final read. And then hopefully get the furniture about mid-August to mid-September. Again, finance with 2020 band funds. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I just wanted to weigh in on one thing that Ms. Piaz said is, is that. As part of this process, the selection committee normally would have looked for tables and more collaborative spaces that the students could work with, especially at the elementary level. But given where we're at with COVID and the desire to make sure that we can still separate students and provide that maximum distancing. Cause it has been problematic when we, when we had to do that this year. All the student desks are individual desks. If we see out in a future process where we're going to be, COVID is gone and we don't have these issues again, as we make future furniture purchases, we'll have the option and the ability. To switch furniture around because this is a consistent furniture standard. That was explained to us at FNO that'll be used throughout the district. It's kind of the template going forward. These are standard gray desks. They're not colored so that we don't end up with a mismatch of colors and styles. It was really very thoughtful, the entire purchasing and, and selection process. So I wanted to commend the team for all the work that they did there. This was discussed extensively in the FNO meeting.
Thank you.
All right. It looks great. It's very exciting. It really does look nice. So this, so then the plan would be that this would be like the furniture that would go into all the elementary buildings and. Yes, yes, Ms. President. Nice.
And they're height adjustable. All the desks are height adjustable. So you don't have to have a desk for, for kindergartners and a desk for fifth graders.
That's a really good idea. Yeah.
Toolist height adjustment.
Toolist?
Yes.
Even better.
Yeah.
There's nothing like fifth graders trying to fit into a kindergarten desk.
Yep.
Uh, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our construction manager, Brian Gessman from McCarthy and Smith. He's going to come talk to us. Same group of people got together and talked about playground equipment for the same four buildings, Stotson, Erickson, Field and Holstein. And at the time, we also discussed all the various. Vendors and all the different things we could do and tried to come up with a standard that would then elevate our playgrounds district wide. We also did an assessment internally of our playground equipment to determine what was beyond its useful life. And what was going to be able to be saved and used on a, on a future basis. And so Mr. Gessman is going to go over a brief presentation and then we'll talk about the, the bid process. Mr. Gessman?
Thank you very much. Yep. Brian Gessman with McCarthy and Smith here to present the EL one playground selections for Erickson, Field, Holstein and Dotson. For starters, a brief summary. So this is obviously for playground equipment, but it's also inclusive. Of all the underdrain that is associated with all of the playground equipment as well. So what you see in front of you today is an award recommendation for Sinclair Recreation. Similar to the playground bids that were received. Those were through consortium bidding. So we received two proposals, interviewed both with the project team that consisted of Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Forsight Design, TMP Architecture, as well as McCarthy and Smith. It is important to note, and we will talk through this as we go through this award recommendation. But the project team is actually recommending the second low contractor for a multitude of reasons. But ultimately this contractor in particular really hit the marks when it came to inclusivity. Which was really the, the main focus when it comes to this playground, where the, the low contractor really missed the mark when it came to that. So. Collectively as a project team thought it best to move forward or suggest Sinclair Recreation. And we do have some, some pictures to go through as well. Included in this packet, Forsight Design, I mentioned them previously, they are the playground designers in conjunction with TMP Architecture. Again, listing some of the rationale as to why Sinclair Recreation is being selected or being suggested today for your guys' review. So hitting the marks, seven elements of play, play is categorized in a multitude of different ways. But again, the long and short is. This in, in particular contractor really checked all the boxes, so to speak, when it came to a, a complete playground. In the playground that Plymouth Canton Schools wants to see in the future. This is really where it comes down to dollars and cents. So we received two proposals via consortium bidding, one from Midstate Recreation, one from Sinclair Recreation. So if you look all the way over to the right-hand column where it says total, you will know it is a relative significant. Dollar value change from the low person at one point eight nine three to Sinclair Recreation at just over two million dollars. So certainly a significant amount of, of amount, amount of money. And we will talk through kind of what is also included when it comes to Sinclair Recreation. And in one case, we had a contractor that really missed the mark. And then we had another contractor really exceeded what those expectations were. And really why we're, we're suggesting them to be reviewed today. I know this is a little bit of small print. Hopefully you do have it also electronically, but this is the bid summary. So, so what do these dollars mean? Ultimately, we give you a revised budget. Our budget is just under two million dollars, one point nine two five. And we're bringing a project to you today that is, that is beyond that by about a hundred and two thousand. So the arithmetic there that we're showing is basically. Based on our budget of one point nine million dollars and some change, we will be approximately over budget by about a hundred and two thousand dollars. We further explain at the bottom of that, at the bottom of that summary is. The last time I was in front of you, we had a, a, a positive variance of the construction value. We actually had just over two and a half million dollar savings, two, two point seven, almost two point eight million dollar savings. So what we're suggesting today is that one hundred thousand dollars is basically paid out of that savings from the construction cost that was presented to you guys previously. There is a note there in the bottom left-hand corner that all in all Sinclair actually offered up to the value of about eighty-six thousand dollars that is within this proposal today. Of actually additional equipment that wasn't necessarily required, but added to the inclusivity of their overall program. One thing I failed to mention on the onset of this, the proposal in front of you today actually qualifies Plymouth Canton Schools and every. Building in bid package EL one Erickson, Field, Holstein and Dotson to receive a, a national demonstration title. National when it comes to inclusivity and access. So that is not something that they just give away. So that really means you're really hitting the mark when it comes to accessibility for, for all students. A board member had asked previously, as far as any sort of minority owned companies and how, how we go about asking those questions. So we asked that question of all participants. In this case, Sinclair Recreation, which just happens to be the, the person we are recommending. Is a WBE, which is essentially a women owned business or company. So that was the question that asked previously. So we did document that on bid summary or bid tab as well as put their certification as, as part of this pack. This is kind of a consolidated view of all of the equipment. So highlighted in yellow is all of the new equipment that is scheduled to go in place. Again, it is really a standardized process. So pretty much every school. As part of EL one is essentially getting the same equipment based on their need and, and what equipment is beyond its useful life. So highlighting yellow is the new equipment, blue is the existing. There is some that is still has life left. And so if it, if it's. Still got life left, we are, we are continuing to use it and some items are getting relocated. A view of Erickson. You will note that big orange area, they're centralizing the playground equipment, not necessarily shrinking it, but. Centralizing it such that you're not running from one playground quote unquote to another or in between obstacles or. Equipment, but it's, it's all within a, a wood mulch play surface. So that way, in addition to the drainage, it provides a, as dry of a surface as we possibly can. Field. Holstein. They are separated by upper and lower elementary. So they call them play structure A, play structure B. Again, they're all very, very identical actually, but. Upper and lower playgrounds for all. So disregard colors. So this is, this is the rendering of the exact piece of equipment, but certainly the color themselves is subject to change. And there's a vast variety of, of different, different colors. But this is the play structure A. So you'll see, you know, overhead climbing equipment, you see slides. A couple of the other things, we have reduced this down just to try and consolidate a little bit, but you will notice a lot of points of access. But you will notice a lot of points of access, ADA access. What you can see kind of in the middle is a sensory climber, which again is one of those kind of added bonuses, so to speak, to the children using it, which really wasn't a requirement. But in today's day and age, the project team thought a great idea and something, part of that $86,000 worth of value that Sinclair added in there, that's wrapped up in some of those components, that one being an example. This is play structure B. Again, you can see ramp to ramp to platform to ramp to a point where it's the somebody who might be a little bit physically challenged. It's not like they can just go 10 feet into this play structure. They can actually really get to the middle of this thing and have something to do, which again is a great component. This is something that the principals were specifically excited about. They call this kind of an obstacle course. This does have the ability to grow. They do have other obstacles that you can add to it. If each building with the district's approval wanted to add on to it, the possibility is there. But again, this is just kind of a good outlet and avenue for children to play. Swings. Here's an example of some of the spinners that are included. Some are group, some are individual. And this is they classify as a equipment or a climber. Some of the sensory equipment, sensory stations, that's something that I know is integrated in some of the elementary schools as is. But likewise with this proposed playground program, it has a bunch of ground-mounted sensor equipment. So those of all walks of life and abilities can have access to it and utilize it. And that is it.
Questions?
Anybody have any questions? I'd like to just thank you for talking about all of the accessibility features, the sensory features that are embedded in here. It does show a lot of thought going into this and looking at the needs of kids. So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
Just on that front, we wholeheartedly at the FNO Committee recommended that this was the way to go as well. The extra cost, yes, it's slightly more expensive when you take out the extra cost, but those extra costs are really a big benefit from that sensory perspective and from an inclusivity perspective. So we're very excited to see this project and again, setting the stage for standard playgrounds for us to go forward.
Alright, anybody else? Okay, this was really nice. And I agree with Patrick. If we are going to make equity one of our pushes for the board initiatives, then we absolutely have to make sure that that carries into our play equipment so that all our children can have a chance at recess. This is beautiful. I'm sure the schools will be very excited to get this.
Definitely.
And once the board votes in two weeks on a final, that'll again be installed in the fall. So it'll be this year yet. So I'm just very excited.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gussman.
Thank you.
Please. Next up is the resolutions for the use of E-rate funds. And Mr. Solcer is here and he's going to talk about both network electronics and structured cabling that will be used with the E-rate dollars to purchase on a first read.
Thank you. So we actually have two resolutions there before you. We have identified a few projects that we can put to the that are part of both EL1 and HS1 and 2 that are coming up in next year that would be eligible for reimbursement under the federal program for E-rate. And so we went out to bid for both structured cabling. That's the data that you would see in the walls, like the data ports, as well as fiber links between closets in our buildings and their head-in rooms. Might be talking Greek, apologize. And then network appliances. So access points where you can distribute a wireless signal to devices and switches. And so we went out to bid and these two resolutions are the product of those two bids. And we will have about half of the cost of the work underwritten by the government. So through the E-rate process and we're just alerting you and hoping that you'll approve those resolutions at the next read and didn't know if you had any questions for me or for us.
Alright, does anybody have any questions about this?
Once again, we talked about this extensively in FNO and we grilled Mark about the equipment and the timing and the purchases. So we're very comfortable with this moving forward and we're excited to have the ability to partnership with the federal government on getting this equipment.
And we'll keep doing this too. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next up we have, we actually have an action item. 210458, consider approval of a resolution to overhaul Chiller Unit at Salem High School, final reading. We did talk about this at our last meeting when it was brought as a first reading. So this is the final reading. So I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I would make motion to consider approval of the resolution to overhaul Chiller Unit at Salem High School, final reading, action item 210458.
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Right. It has been moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Kehoe that we consider approval of a resolution to overhaul Chiller Unit at Salem High School, final reading, action item 210458. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright. Seven zero, thank you. The next one is 210459, consider approval of resolution for the revised water main easement for Stotson Elementary. This is first and final. Did somebody want to give a brief explanation of this?
Sure, I'll start and then Mr. Gussman will come up and fill me in if I miss anything. So this is a water main easement. When we approved EL1, the package for expansion at Stotson Elementary, unfortunately, the extension of the addition goes and forces us to move the water main that's currently there. So the easement has to change and based on the language provided in your board packet, behind the resolution is where the water main has to move. And so because of that, we need a revised easement for the water main that is required this evening to be approved by the Board of Education. This water main is a public utility and owned by the Charter of Tonton and as such, we have to have a formal action because it relates to real estate. Mr. Gussman, do you have any other comments?
I don't believe so. We will not be moving the water main during the school year if that was a question. So this would be a summertime activity, but nonetheless, a legal process that we need to go through to acknowledge that the water main will be relocated and this is kind of the paperwork for that.
And we discussed this in FNO that we want to do this as a first and final to make sure that this is done before we can start the construction project.
Does anybody have any questions? Alright, I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of the resolution for a revised water main easement for Stotson Elementary School. First and final reading, action item 210459.
Okay, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Alright. It has been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks that we consider approval of a resolution for revised water main easement for Stotson Elementary School. First and final reading, action item 210459. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No? Okay, it is past seven zero. Thank you very much. We are now on to three, which is teaching and learning.
Thank you. Like to take this opportunity to talk tonight about summer programming. And as we look at the plan for summer programming, I want to talk a little bit about how the plan was developed and also about the process it's gone through since then. So as we looked at the plan first development through teaching and learning, we looked at our NWA data and the data that we did have in front of us as well as our credit attainment data to begin to develop the plan. We also reached out and surveyed teachers to see what kind of innovative programming we could offer for students this year and what some of the interest areas were in that area aspect as well. Additionally, we had a great workshop this weekend with the board, a very collaborative workshop, looking at summer programming and helping to kind of frame the larger picture as we look at summer programming and then moving into fall and beyond. I also want to shout out and talk about the fact that as we talk about this through teaching and learning, summer programming, just like everything else we do at PCCS, is an extensive collaboration between many departments, including nutrition services who feed our students in the summer, transportation, who help ensure that we can get all students access to our programming, as well as maintenance and operations who help ensure that our buildings are clean, safe, and ready for our students to learn. So as we looked at the challenges that we were seeking to address as a teaching and learning team based on our data that shows us that we have some unfinished learning and that as we look at unfinished learning, thinking about those skills that have not yet been mastered or that we need to continue to address based on the compression of time over the impact of COVID-19. We look at the increased need for social, emotional, mental health and academic support for our students, knowing that this pandemic hit our young people very hard as well as our staff and our community. We look at enhancing opportunities for student voice and choice. And as I say these terms, I want to make sure that we have some collaborative understanding of what they are. Student voice is where students see themselves and have the ability to discuss and insert and be a part of the learning instead of being a passive recipient of learning. So student voice means where do our students get the opportunity to really share, understand, uncover, unpack, and really collaborate on their learning. Student choice means opportunities, opportunities for students to have a variety of ways that they can engage with content. And as we look for now into the future, we want to keep these things as our undergirding and underlying foundations of our work. We're also looking at supporting higher levels of student engagement. How do we get excited, students excited about learning? As we look at now, the future, continuing to work always to look through the lens of how do we get authenticity, relevancy, and excitement around learning? How do we ignite passion in our students around what they're learning and why they're learning it? And recapturing lost student enrollment. We know that we lost families this year who made some choices, but we believe deeply and passionately about the things we do at PCCS and that we can offer the best opportunities for our students. And these are some ways that we can help show our families that we're here together and we're in this work together and we want everyone to be together with this work. So I want to anchor what some of the programming that we're doing through these lenses are with you tonight. As we look at the impact of COVID-19 and unfinished learning, programs that we're planning to offer this summer are things like our Elementary and Middle School Summer Academy. We've had this program for years and in the past few years, we've shifted it to more of a project-based model and we'll talk about that in a minute. Tutoring for our K-5 students. Credit recovery for our high schoolers. Algebra Jump Start, and I'm going to unpack these in just a minute. And then our extended school year, Autism Spectrum Disorder and Hearing Impaired Center-Based Programs. You've heard a lot tonight about inclusivity and making sure that we have equity and access for all of our students. It's exciting to hear things about playground equipment that has inclusive elements to it. Teaching and learning has collaborated with many different departments over the years to start to ensure that our lens and our focus is always on those areas and that they drive everything that we do here at PCCS. When we look at our Elementary and Middle School Summer Academy for our K-8 students, looking at using project-based learning, project-based STEM units to help kids ignite and get passion around math and literacy so that they don't see it as math at this time and ELA at this time, but it's really driven through and included into a holistic unit and holistic projects for our young people. Also, we're going to talk in a little bit about supports that we're laying in layering into these as well. Our Summer Academy for 6-8 students, looking at data to really drive and differentiate instruction for our students. As we see the pandemic hit our young people, one thing that's very clear from our data is that as our students age, the content gets harder and also our challenges get greater with them. So ensuring that we're really diving in, digging in and differentiating and meeting the needs of our students. Tutoring for our students. There's a lot of research on what's called high dosage tutoring, one-on-one and two-on-one. Dig down deep and really be extensive, teach teachers how, teach adults how to tutor students well, provide the opportunity for that. So throughout the summer program and then beyond through the rest of the summer, we're looking at those tutoring opportunities around ELA, literacy, reading and writing, as well as mathematics for our students. We're looking at this done both face-to-face and virtually to allow for flexibility from our families because we recognize that we want our students in person as much as possible, but we also want to ensure that we provide opportunities for all of our families as we integrate and implement these programs. Credit recovery and Algebra Jump Start, offering credit recovery both in-person and virtually using our teachers. And also last year, for the first time, we piloted something called an Algebra Jump Start Program where we targeted some of our students who were at risk of not being as successful as possible in algebra based on historic data. And we found great success with that program. So our plan is to expand that program. Targeted rising ninth graders to give them a half-credit jump start in math in high school and help set them up for success in algebra, Algebra II, and higher levels of mathematics. We know that this is a gateway for success for young people and data shows us that success in algebra is also a huge aspect of success in high school. So continuing to expand this program. Our Extended School Year Program for ASD and HI students. It's a center-based program where we help ensure that learning loss is stable, that the summer kind of slide decreases and we keep our students' skills stable throughout the summer for some of our most vulnerable and at-risk students. As we look at the increased need for academic, social, emotional, and mental health support, again, we look to our tutoring program. But we also look to support for our students who are English learners, our students who have IEPs, also known as Individualized Education Programs, a focus on our SEL competencies across all of our programming this summer, and then train staff onsite to support our students' social, emotional wellness. And we'll talk a little bit about that. Rather than pulling out our students for programs where we say, let's do this over here. Instead, we're diving in, integrating and embedding into everything that we do. So having EL's teachers onsite, having EL's support onsite for our English learners so that they fully engage in everything that we do and we integrate and interweave all of our strategies within the system. Same thing for students with IEPs, embedding support for students into our programming and ensuring that we're co-teaching and we're modeling those great skills, both for the adults as well as for the students in the room. Support for social, emotional, and mental health, embedding the supports throughout the program, working on SEL competencies and all of the things that we do, but also ensuring that we have staff onsite to support our students' social, emotional, and mental health needs throughout the summer. So dedicating trained, targeted mental health and social, emotional health and support staff onsite with our students. Enhancing our opportunities for student voice and choice and increasing and supporting higher levels of student engagement. How are we planning to do this? We're looking at the true expansion of our summer learning opportunities, enhancing with accelerated camps and community-based experiences. Ensuring that we continue to offer credit attainment, credit advancement offerings, and then also providing transition support for our transition levels, kindergarten, sixth, and ninth graders. And I'm not going to read through all of these. I'm just going to highlight a few of them and talk about some of the accelerated camps and opportunities that we'll be offering this summer. Things like an African-American Literature Camp, Augmented Reality, Virtual Reality, and Artificial Intelligence Explorations Camps. Community Reads, where we send books home with every student, K-12 and PCCS, with activities that they can engage with in their families that are facilitated and supported by PCCF staff, both virtually and in person. So people can come together as a community and we can really enhance literacy across all of our community. Creative Writing Camps, eSports Camps, Inquiry or Passion Project Camps, where students tell us what they're interested in and we support them in learning about that. We use the design thinking structure and design thinking challenges to do that. Number Sense Camps, where kids, young children get to play with numbers and play with math and engage in hands-on creative activities. STEM Labs throughout the summer. Spoken Word Camps, where students get to practice literacy skills, speaking and listening skills in authentic and fun ways. Summer Writing Camps throughout, as well as things like robotics camps and SAT prep camps and trying to look across the spectrum of how we meet the needs of our students. Credit attainment or credit advancement programs. Credit attainment or credit advancement programs. And we'll talk in a minute about the ability of students and families to engage in these. But moving forward and taking a new class so that they can open up something else in their schedule as they move forward. We're looking at in-person virtual opportunities for this, as well as some additional credit recovery options beyond the ones that we will have, which we'll talk about in a minute, at no cost to families. But as we look at this one, these are also ones that families would have an option of, but some of these, and I want to be transparent and make sure it's spoken out, is that these additional opportunities would be ones that families would have some cost incurred with them. But as we look at transition support, offering transition support prior to the school year for our kindergarteners, as they enter their first formal K-12 experience. For our sixth graders and our ninth graders, web programming and Link Crew, as they engage in that transition year to help set them up for success from the beginning. And then looking at recapturing our lost student enrollment. Summer Academy Credit Recovery, Accelerated Camps and Community-Based Experiences for any students that are enrolled in PCCS for the upcoming school year, without a cost to the families. And we can do this because we have some federal funds this year, and we'll talk about that in just a sec, that allow us to utilize this and look differently and innovate in some different ways. Multiple opportunities and flexibility for participation in our program options, and looking at in-person programming with virtual and hybrid opportunities as well. Public Act III of 2001, some people know it as HB 4048, but all of this legislation has been floating out, and it allows us to capture some federal funds. Up to $550 per pupil, reimbursement for students served, and an additional $100 for students for innovative programming. And you'll see on the screen what the requirements are for that. For credit recovery, the student must have been enrolled in our district this past year, did not earn one or more credit, is not on track to graduate, should say is, sorry, it says in. District determines that the student is eligible. And for us, eligibility means they've lost a credit somewhere in their high school career. It did not have to be this year. Provided in-person, online, by other means, and developed with teacher input and is teacher-led. Summer programming requirements for our K-8 students. They must be offered for students in K-8, eight weeks of program offerings. But we're going beyond that. And the state defines that as any number of hours for eight weeks. So we could choose to do one hour a week for eight weeks, but we're expanding far beyond that. We're looking at lots of dedicated programming throughout the summer, lots of opportunities. Offering the opportunities multiple times wherever possible, so that students can engage. Offering AM and PM sessions, so that students can engage in multiple camps, multiple accelerated programs, multiple community-based offerings, as well as our enrichment camps and our academic support systems for those students who are targeted as well. And pupils are able to attend in-person. So our next steps as a teaching and learning team are to finalize our planning, and we have to submit a preliminary plan by this Thursday, April 15th, to the Michigan Department of Education. We're also going to survey students for some additional interest. We know that we've created a really comprehensive program for our young people, but we need to ask them what they'd like, and if we have the ability to offer it, we will do so. So as we reach out to our young people and we say, "What are you interested in that you haven't seen on this list?", getting that feedback from them. Confirming our staffing and making sure that all of our teachers who have said that they are interested in doing this, and anyone else who hasn't yet come out and said, "I'm really interested in doing this", have the opportunity to engage with our learners this summer, and have fun and reignite passion together. Identifying our program metrics. As we launch the program, we will be doing pre-assessment in different ways with our students. So some of that is, how many students are going to be engaging? And did they complete the program in some programs? Some of it is about, did you enjoy it, and what did you like about it? And other program metrics are things like, as we look at some of our academic support programs, is it moving the needle with our students? Is it ensuring that it's building the academic supports? We believe it is. Finalizing our offerings, developing and launching our marketing materials, getting our registration out there, implementing it, program evaluation using our programic metrics and our data collection, reflecting and revising for next year. So I'll pause now for questions that you might have. What questions do you have?
Anubom, do you have questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I know we spent a lot of time on this Saturday, so I don't have a whole lot of questions. With regard to the K-8 programming on the slide, I'm seeing, in order to get funding, kids have to be here every day, face-to-face.
That's not entirely accurate. So, working with Wayne Risa, we've reached out a number of times and asked a number of different questions to the MDE. And we have to offer in-person programming for our K-8 students. If a student, for example, came some days but didn't attend all days, we still are able to capture the funding for it. It's interesting, because the language is, the language is broad and vague, so we've asked for specificity, which does not necessarily, excuse me, exist. So, offering the eight weeks of programming takes care of that piece. Offering in-person options takes care of that piece. But we want to go far and above that and offer a variety of options for our families.
So just to clarify, students may be able to participate virtually or in a hybrid format if they are not able to stay or be in-person?
Absolutely. So wherever possible, where we can provide those options, we will.
Great. My last question is, actually, this is more of a comment, because we talked about this on Saturday, but I want to bring it up again, because this is something that I want to make sure we don't lose sight of, which is to be more empathetic with regard to our policies for attendance for summer school.
Yes.
In whatever program that is. I think we need to honor some family time, if families need to take some time off, or if they are traveling, they can participate virtually. We've learned some great things this year, that students can learn virtually, if the right things are in place. So I want to make sure that we are not penalizing students for absences, just because that's our policy.
Yep, and we are having that discussion with the, in the teaching and learning team, and also with all of our coordinators and our sites and our staff for summer programming.
Thank you.
Sean?
For the credit recovery, Howard, can you just help me understand how, is it mandatory for students? You know, it looks like they're going to be working with their individual teachers. I guess I'm looking at, I know we're going to get a better sense of how many students are going to be eligible for credit recovery. But then my question is, is it up to the student to then apply for that and enroll in that? Or is it something that we're tracking?
It's a combination of both. So our students enroll in it, but our counselors, our teachers, our support staff, our principals help reach out and invite students to credit recovery as well. We also want to make sure that, I want to make sure it's transparent that we offer multiple forms of credit recovery too. So we offer more, kind of a more compressed version of a more traditional kind of credit recovery, but individualized more for students. And we also offer programming using a program called Edge Annuity, where we can pre-assess students, and then we look at just those skills that they are, that they... So the skills that they've mastered, we focus on the ones that they're not yet solid in, and so we focus on those and help them earn the credit for their courses as well.
So is one data point that we can look at moving down the road is, let's say we have 1,000 students eligible for us to be able to see that 50% of them, or 75% of them took advantage of the credit recovery option in the summer?
Yep, we will share with the board that data. We also have historically shared with the board the number of courses taken for credit recovery, the number of credits earned, and all of that data as well. So we'll continue to share all that data as we look at summer programming, and we'll share much more data as a whole. So in the, in the fall, early fall, typically, teaching and learning will do a data presentation to the Board of Education about summer programming. And then, for example, when we see things like the Algebra Jump Start Program, we track that data over time, and then we'll bring that data as well for that. So as we look at the success of that program, because it piloted last year, and the expansion of it, we'll continue to track the data and make sure it's an effective program for our students.
Doug, do you have questions?
No.
Okay. LaRonda, do you have questions?
So when you were just discussing around credit recovery, and being able to report back to the board, like the number of credits earned, just to look at the data a little bit more robustly, are we able to know, like, which classes are specific to, like, the credit recovery? And then who are those students who need it?
Yes.
And so, if there's a way to capture that, we may be able to look at the data more robustly and use that to drive some additional programming.
Yep, so we look at the courses that were taken, and the subject areas that they were taken in. And we will continue to do, expand, and ensure that we're looking at it through all lenses, including as we look at our subgroups, our subgroup success, as well as our aggregate success. So those are areas that we are focused on growing in as a teaching and learning team.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Lauren?
Yeah, I know we touched on this a little bit during our workshop on Saturday. You know, this is all really exciting to see this robust summer programming coming forward, and I'm really excited for the community to hear about it. And I'm just wondering, you know, do we have a timeline as when families can start to register for these things? I know there's a lot of planning in the works still, but, you know, I'm sure people are anxious and excited to sign up.
Yep, so our plan is, we're going to actually do like a coming attractions thing within the next week or two. We're working with Mr. Brandon, I know he's around here somewhere, for marketing materials. And then we'll follow up with the registration form, because as we finalize dates, because one of the things we're doing is we're calendaring it out to offer families and students most options possible. So trying not to double-book certain things and spread them out. So as we finalize that data, I did put the kind of date ranges out in this presentation, and that will come in the coming attraction, so that people will know where approximately things are falling. But as we firm those up, we'll get that out as soon as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Patrick?
So I want to thank you for the presentation today, and also for the robust discussion that we had on Saturday about this. One thing that struck me about this whole process is that it's student-centered. And one of the things that you mentioned on Saturdays is engaging learning experiences that excite the students. And I think that that's really important as a foundational work that we're doing. And I'm glad to see that that's coming through in these programs, and it's kind of the basis of the things that are happening. I echo Ms. Christiansen's feedback, is the sooner we can get this information out to the community so that they can be aware of this, the better, and I'm glad that you have a plan forward to do that. So thank you.
Thank you.
My questions have been asked and answered. This is lovely. I'm very excited about all the offerings for the summer school for the students. I think this will go a long way for helping some of the unfinished learning to happen in a fun, engaging manner. Thank you.
Yep, and we're adding some offerings to this even this week, so we're really excited. It's going to be, it's going to be a great time with young people this summer, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we are at four, PCCS in-person learning survey for Safe Start families. And we have Dr. Lance here with us tonight.
Evening. So I'm Michael Lance of Exolance. I'm sorry, it's a bad joke, but here we are. And so, in the last two months, beginning of March, beginning of April, we set out to find how parents are perceiving mitigation strategies, how they're being conducted in schools, and what their opinions are of them. And so, we had two main questions. For K-8 and Stark Weather, we asked, "How effectively do you feel the following strategies are currently being implemented in the full-day model? Consider asking your child for insight into each of them, because the child knows more about the inner workings of what's going on in the school, obviously." For PSAP and Post-Secondary, we asked, "How effectively do you feel the following strategies are currently being implemented in the five-day, half-day model?", and it's a typo on my end. We asked that in April, and in March, we asked them about the hybrid model. "Consider asking your child for insight into each." So just keep that in mind, that we asked about the hybrid model in March, and the five-day, half-day model in April for PSAP, as we look at the results. So in terms of key insights and limitations, in general, we saw that lower grade bands, especially K-5, have higher ratings, and upper had lower ratings relatively. When I say ratings, I mean, and I'll get to that in detail later, but how well the perceptions were expressed. Higher grade bands tend to show more of a decline in ratings as well from March to April, which we'll see shortly. The highest ratings in general were that teachers and staff were wearing masks, and also K-5 in general had the highest, as I mentioned. The lowest ratings were that involved distancing between students. So for K-12 in general, in the classroom and on the bus. For 6-12, in the classroom and on the bus, in addition to cafeteria, six feet distance while eating. That's what that one said. There was mention of congregating, and for middle school, physical contact was mentioned. And for high school or PSAP, staggered dismissal was also mentioned. Also, for 6-12, one-way movement in hallways was one of the lower ratings as well. So the next two slides, next four slides actually, reiterate what I just said, only just graphically. So you can see on the left, and the lighter, for all these bar charts, the lighter shaded bars are March, and the darker shaded bars are April. You can see that on the left for K-5, that generally the ratings are high, with a couple of exceptions in the bottom perhaps. And then in middle school on the right, you can see they're a bit lower, and you can also see a more of a drop from the lighter shaded bars to the darker shaded bars. So that's from March to April. And this is for PSAP and Post-Secondary. You can see even more of a drop, lesser ratings for some of these. Again, if you look at the bottom, you can see distance between students in the classroom, then up one distance between students on the bus, one-way movement in hallways. So kind of like what I said at the beginning. Now, these charts have to be understood in context. So there was an item that said, "Select any number that you feel need to be effectively addressed", and the parents were presented with a series, a list of checkboxes for each item. So, for example, if you look at elementary at the very top, 10% of respondents for K-5 chose air purifiers, as something that might be more effectively addressed. That also means 90% did not, right? So it's important to understand the inverse of this, and what exactly we're looking at. If you look at on the right, the only ones that really stand out in terms of having a lot would be congregating for a middle school, and physical contact, handshakes, fist bumps, exchanging items, and so on. And even so, it would be, you know, 78% didn't say it, 22% did say it for physical contact, for example. If you look at PSAP and Post-Secondary, the ones that stand out the most are congregating and staggered dismissal. Some limitations to consider. So when these questions are posed to the parents, there's also part of it that says, you know, "Talk to your child", right? And some people may not have done that, or very much, and so that may have impacted the results. The perception there may not affect what's really actually happening in the school, because again, we're asking about inner workings of the school, and they may or may not have an accurate perception. Not that they mostly don't, but it's just something that may have happened. The perception of the district, school, or teacher, or other factors as a whole might impact their responses as a whole. Numbers, the numbers here don't address why, right? It's just what, what's happening? Or I'm sorry, what is the perception? Not why do they perceive it that way. External events, sample size, for example, Stark Weather, and our programs, very small sample sizes, so it's, you have to take it with a grain of salt. Different groups of responders each month. We don't know for sure, because, you know, if I send a survey out to both parents for the same student, right? I can look at the result from one email address versus another, but maybe that student had different parents each month, or maybe the student took the survey one month and the parent did the other, or maybe it was just a different group of parents that responded. There might be fewer moderate opinions represented in surveys like this. We try to survey as many as we can. The change in models from March to April for PSAP could be a factor. You definitely saw more declines there, so that's something to note. And other factors as well. And other factors as well. So not to go too much into detail, but just a few things to mention. Um, in April, we sent out uh the, the survey to twenty-two thousand three hundred ninety-four parent email addresses, representing twelve thousand six hundred eighty-four students minus bounces or invalid email addresses, which accounted for no more than point three percent, and I think that's actually a high estimate of how many came back that way. Response rates from March was twenty-seven percent, and April was twenty percent, and that varied by grade building and question. Things to note, um, the, the rates, the response rates actually will vary by item. Because if I ask, if, if the question was about, let's say, teachers wearing face masks, and we had a lot of people who say, I don't know or not applicable, then that response rate for that item is less than another one where maybe no one said, where maybe no one said not applicable, right? So we keep that in mind as well, or that's factored into the results, I should say. Results are censored if there's less than ten responses. So response rates by grade band, we can see up here, middle school has the highest, then elementary, then high school, and Stark Weather. Others had less than ten. For the rating system, it was pretty straightforward. We had four choices, very effectively, effectively, somewhat effectively, not effectively, and we also had, I don't know, not applicable. So the calculation, it was just the positive ones divided by all of them, except not applicable. I took into account margin of error, that's impacted by how many responses you get for the question, the population size, like all sixth grade students, for example. The standard error, March had a slightly smaller error, margin of error, because it had more respondents. Um, I didn't sample from the populations, one reason is because um inclusion, we want to make sure we get everyone's voice. Also, like, there was, for example, there were some parents that they got the email a little bit later than other parents, because it takes some time for the server to send them all out, and they right away emailed me, where's, where's my, my survey? They really wanted to take the survey, so that goes to that point. And also to sample um from a population, you, you need a lot more time to really make sure you get all the subgroups populated correctly. The complete set of charts are available at the links below. Please look at my charts. I spent a, a lot of time making them look lovely. They're absolutely lovely, I may say. And there's a lot of detail, um, and I'm available for questions from the board later if you ever have questions about them. But please do look at my charts. Questions?
Anupam? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lance, for presenting this detailed information.
Sure.
I think as a board, one of the things we wanted to make sure was looking at our mitigation strategies, how are they being implemented? What is the perception? Obviously, what people put in may not be reality. I think the opportunity is for us to look at the data. So there is, there are trends for us to look at. And so, you know, I think as a board with superintendent merit, we need to think about and look at where are pieces of opportunity for us to improve our mitigation strategies? At the end of the day, this is about kids, keeping kids and staff safe. So it's important for us to look at the data. When I look at some of the gaps or the changes from March to April, there are some big variances in areas that I'd like to, for us to talk about, not today, uh but at some point. But I think this is why data is important, right? To take a look at where are we doing well and where are areas of opportunities for growth. And to your point about, you know, some may not be talking to their parents as they fill this out, true. And I don't know if you have any suggestions for improving that, um, so we get more accurate data.
Um, one suggestion would be to survey, send the survey out at the end of the school day or later, like in that, that day, so that you're forced to wait until your kids are home to, so your kid's right in front of you before you even open up the survey. That's one. Um, another is maybe, if possible, give more time to take the survey, so they don't feel rushed to have to do it. And then just maybe have a, maybe embolden that part, encouraging to talk to the, the children that can be emboldened perhaps somewhere or in the body of the email itself, maybe toward the top, like, please make sure you speak to your child um before doing this, so we get the most accurate response possible.
Those are great suggestions.
Thanks.
Uh, I have one ask, and I don't know if this is an internal ask or an external ask. But when we got the survey, it came with a weird email. Um, I want to, it was sender one.
That's right.
For some people, it went to their spam, and some people didn't get it. Is there a way that we can improve who it's coming from, so parents know that it is not just some spam or it's a valid email address that's associated with PCCS?
There, there is. I believe it was, it was decided to have an external one, because um it was uh not really the district doing it, and as much as external vendor doing it. And um it is possible. I know emails are sent from internally. I'd have to defer to the district to work out the details and um, if that happens or not, but it's uh, it can be done. I know there was a renouncement made before the emails were sent to look out for this email address and so on. And I know it still went to spam for a lot of people. I know um, I think about five people total reported it as spam of everyone who got it. So that's not too bad. Um, there were a few people that they said they couldn't find it anywhere, so they emailed me directly and I sent it right to them right away. If, so I, I can't say whether it will happen or not, I, it's not my decision to make. But I, I can say that um if we do stick with the sender one at studentreports.org, it will um, over time, people will recognize it and their emails will recognize it more, I think. But I'll, I'll leave it at that. That's okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have more questions, but I will give my colleagues some more time to ask their questions. Sean?
Yeah. Um, Ms. Merritt, I would love to get your assessment, you know, when you looked at this data. You know, what kind of jumped out to you or, you know, what were your thoughts overall on um, on, on the report that you received?
I do think that uh this report supports, I think, our number one mitigation strategy, and teachers and students wearing masks. So that was good to see. I um do think, um, I thought a lot about the perception piece from a parent perspective, you know, within lunch at PSAP, for example, we don't have lunch at PSAP for the cafeteria and eating unmasked. I just had uh questions about that, and I know that even during breakfast time, there's not a lot of students in there, they're using the Kiara code. So I know that they are um adhering to those six feet that are there. Um, an actionable item that I wanted to do with this, since you'll see in all the details that Dr. Lance has provided this information by school, so sharing this with the building principals so that they have an opportunity to go through this data as well and validate, um, you know, what is happening within the buildings versus what could uh potentially be perceptions. And so I think that uh the things that stood out were not a shock to me um, as it relates to even what we heard from the change from March to April. So as students were in a classroom with three feet apart, I mean, six feet apart in March, and then moved to three feet apart, as we talked about here at the building, the perception even of that for a child is this is pretty much a pre-pandemic classroom, and it really felt crowded. And I think that those communications probably went to their parents. So although we know that we are following what has been described, prescribed for us as our mitigation strategies, I understand the perception of how that could feel um crowded in terms of a difference between March and April. So continuing um to make sure we message, um how we're measuring, what classrooms look like, those are some things that I took away. Um, but once again, uh just uh thinking about the most important mitigation strategy, I'm good to see. I'm glad to see that that's continuing to be followed. One further thing that my concern, I would say, is are we dealing with survey fatigue? So sending out twenty-two thousand emails, first time we get um small sample size, but I would think it's three thousand.
Twenty-seven percent.
Twenty-seven percent, and then that falling off. So um just continuing to think about uh different ways that maybe we could um implement this. I also thought about students, and is there a way that we could do something within school that they could actually have an opportunity to respond to similar questions? But overall, uh pleased, I think, with the responses, and would like to just share those at the building level again to get actual feedback from people that are in the building um implementing the mitigation strategy.
For me, uh, once, once it goes to the building, you know, will, then you request them to assess them and then basically send back a strategy of how they're gonna um, you know, mitigate the, any of the potential issues or, or address any of the tension, uh potential issues?
Yes.
Perfect.
I'm Doug.
I just uh thought that it's very good day, data to look at, and um I think we really need to take a look at and come to agreement on what it means. Next.
Miranda?
No questions.
Okay. Lauren?
Um, this is maybe like a small little detail, um, but just kind of along with um Anupam was asking, you know, how can we improve, improve um our survey uh implementation? I'm, I'm wondering too, are there survey reminders? Because I know as a parent, I receive a ton of emails, and I know, Ms. Merritt, you just mentioned survey fatigue. Um, oftentimes, these emails pop up, I might be, you know, waiting in line at the grocery store, see that, oh yeah, I need to look at that, and it slips my mind, and all of a sudden, you know, that window is gone. Is there an opportunity to send, you know, maybe a follow-up email, like, hey, reminder, we have a, a few more days. Sit down with your student and please fill out this valuable informational survey for, for your school district. So just think that that might be a good opportunity.
As I think it definitely have that opportunity, I believe that we might have done that on the first survey, not sure. This one, I think the turn, turnaround time was so quick.
Yeah.
Um, and trying to get that information back so that we would be able to compare and report this time around. But that is definitely something that you have that ability.
Perfect.
To do.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick?
So uh, again, I thank you for the, this work and all the excellent analysis that went into this. You know, I've been spending some time looking at the charts, so they're very much appreciated. My first question is around the getting the right uh survey data and getting the right uh response rate. I understand that we, we've emailed the, the parents for this process, but I'm wondering if we would get more effective results if we emailed the students, especially at the middle and high school level. Um, I know that all of our students at the high school level, it may be tough to get them to actually look at their email. If you sent them a Snapchat for it, you might get a higher response rates. But it certainly would be something that we should consider as um, as perhaps even a correlated data point to survey the students and the parent and see how those things uh relate to each other uh from a perception perspective. Is there, Monica, is, is that something that we can consider?
Yep, there's, I, I think I, that was the point that I just made, so we're thinking the same way. Opportunity to engage the kids, I think, would be an effective way to move forward.
Okay, great. And then the, I, I actually am concerned about the data that we're seeing on the masks. I think that it's one of our higher rated items, but it is our most critical measure. And at the high school level, it's seventy-one percent say that it's effective, and that concerns me. I mean, we've got a, a significant gap in the, the mask uh strong feeling rate at our high school community. And as I look at the difference between even some of our middle schools, sixty-four percent at Pioneer and eighty-seven percent at West. So we're, and we see some of these trends, even in terms of the number of COVID cases that we see coming up in the, in, in the district in our publicly reported data. And I'm wondering if we need to have some conversations with these low-rated areas, with our administrators, with our teachers, with our families, to have the, those discussions on, on how to make sure that these mitigation measures are in place.
Yep. So in terms of next steps, that's where I talked about giving this information to the buildings. I think another key point that's missing is an opportunity to survey the adults that are in the building. Um, when you think once again of uh the, the, the number of people that responded to the survey versus who's in the building, w- watching what's happening every single day, I think that that would be a valuable tool. So once, uh first is getting this information to them, for them to have an opportunity to analyze, and maybe having that opportunity then to, to respond from the perception of being there in the classrooms, in the cafeteria, in the hallway. Um, every day, I think it would be good to see that response rate as well.
Okay. And, you know, again, in terms of the quality of the data, I was looking at the eating distance rating at the high schools in the cafeteria, six-foot distancing in the high schools uh for the cafeteria, there was a forty-nine. We're not serving lunch in the cafeteria. Yes, we have breakfast that's there, but I, I the, the disconnect between what we're actually offering and how that survey result is, it was jarring to me.
I, I agree, and I think that that, once again, goes back to maybe with the limitation of Dr. Lance saying we're having some that are probably filling, filling out the survey with perception without having either talk to their children. And we know at this point, we don't have a visitation policy, so they're not actually having the opportunity to be within the building. So I think it is important, um, again, to, to provide the data and have some analysis done at the building level as it relates to that, once again, the fact that we don't even have lunch currently at the park. And, and that we will affirm that every single place where we do have lunch, they are six feet apart.
All right, I'll have more questions, but I'll do it the next round.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, that stood out to me that some of these responses don't really, you know, make sense. But, so I, I do think that there needs to be some clarification on not eating in the cafeteria, so we also don't need to, to worry about the sanitation and hand washing in the cafeteria. But it was fine, but this is a lot of data, it's lovely. The charts are fantastic.
Thank you.
Anupam, do you have questions?
Uh, so I did look at the details, snapshots of the different buildings, so I'm looking at all the middle schools. And I think to superintendent merit, um, giving this to your staff to look at the analysis and accuracy, and again, areas of growth and improvement. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to keep kids safe and make sure people are wearing masks, things are being cleaned. And so if there's any um variance here or red flags, that's an opportunity for your staff to double-check it. And so I think for me, it's important to continue looking at data and to let parents know we're analyzing this. And superintendent mayor and her team are looking at the buildings in particular, where you see a huge drop off and where there are little points. So I want to make sure that we're being very clear to ourselves and the community that we are using this data to change and improve our practices. My last question to you is, what's your recommendation with regard to how we move forward uh to get better results, the frequency? I took down four uh things that were said between three of you and one from trustee Christiansen. But what recommendations might you have for us as we look at the trends and our mitigation strategies? How should we proceed?
To get better data?
Yeah.
Um, well, in, in addition to what was said, um, maybe a longer span of time for responses would be good.
Do you think we should be surveying every two weeks, every month? What do you think is a good timeframe?
I think once a month is good, um, or longer. Once a month is probably the most frequent I would do, and within that month, I would have um maybe two weeks or, you know, longer than a week um to respond. And uh, and like I said before, I would, you know, I would originally, when I initially, when I send it out, I would send it out at the end of the school day so that, or on the weekend, perhaps.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Sean, do you have anything else?
Uh, just, just one question. Could the, uh, or make, could the difference in the responses age level also be contributed to, attributed to um the older kids being able to articulate more what, what they're seeing? So I have elementary, and then I have high school age kids. And when we did the first survey, um, when I asked my elementary school kids, you know, about it, it was kind of, oh, yeah, yeah. You, you know, like, not very thorough, not, not thorough answers. But then when I asked my middle school and high school age children the same questions, they could elaborate, they could give me more details, they could kind of spot on it. So, so could some of these numbers and, and the numbers that we're seeing be attributed to, you know, older kids being able to articulate um what they're seeing in the schools more, more effectively?
I think it's a valid point. I, I think that might be happening to some degree. I can't quantify to what degree, but I, you know, if you're, if you're on children, if you notice that in your own children, I'm sure others have as well.
Right. Um, and then I guess my last question or comment is really Right. Um, and then I guess my last question or comment is really, Anupam, to your point, you know, how are we going to use this data to drive change and improvements? Because for instance, the example that I just used, you know, you can look at this data two different, different ways, right? It could be, oh, the, the older kids aren't doing that well, the younger kids aren't doing that well. But the bottom line, there, there's, there's truth in, in the numbers always, right? And there's, um, things that we can find to improve in the numbers always. So what are we going to pull out? What are we going to improve? And to Patrick's point, 71%, you know, even if that's a little exaggerated, that's still super low. And so what actions, firm actions can we take as a, as a district to improve on that? And to Monica's point, it may be better communication, you know, increased communication on distancing or things of that nature. So I, I would just challenge us as a body to, to figure out what are some of the, the clear ways that we can take this data, implement it, um, you know, make some changes and be able to communicate that back to the community to say, we heard you, we heard some of the concerns. These are the clear actions that we've taken, um, to improve it. And then next month, when we do the next data set, we're able to hopefully see an improvement in the trends. Because also all of this is really leading towards the fall as well. So part of this is saying, what have we learned from this in the fall, the weaknesses? And how do we, uh, put, put strategies in place to be able to make sure that we're not having the same problems in the fall?
Can I, can I add one more thing related to what you're saying? Um, and, and your question as well. Once we kind of settle on what's the best approach to, you know, improve this survey and the questions, if we can keep it as consistent as possible.
Right.
That'd be crucial, I think. That'd be as important as having, you know, good questions, obviously.
Right. Cause I, I never actually received a second survey. So I received the first one, but I didn't see the, receive the second survey. And, um, and so it probably went to spam is what I'm hearing.
One thing, if I can, I'm sorry, if I can mention one more thing, you'll notice in the charts, the margin of error. So just for anyone watching this later, listening later, or principals perhaps watching this and you get your building level responses. If you look at the bottom two bars here, for example, 38% and 66%. And the 38% says plus or minus 3%. That means we're 95% confident, quote unquote, that the actual value is 35 to 41, right? And then if you look at the 66%, 63 to 69. Now, if I were to put error bars on it, which I wanted, struggled with, but I didn't know which one I should do. So I just put this margin of error. If I were to put error bars on there, like the whiskers, you know, and if those, I'll call them whiskers, if they overlap, then that means even though one bar might be longer, with that error, it might be statistically about the same. And if those bars, those whiskers do not overlap, then you could infer that one bar is statistically longer than the other. That's something to keep in mind at the building level. For example, if the principal's looking at this and saying, why is this bar longer? Keep in mind the margin of error. That's it.
Doug?
Yeah, I was just going back, looking at all these questions. And to me, you know, I, I definitely think these are like questions that the students should be answering instead of parents. Because if you ask the parents, they're going to get secondhand information from their kids. You know, and what if their mind changes or it's like, yeah, the kid says, well, it is really dirty, but I'm going to say it's clean. You know, and their parents go and they put that down as the answer, you know, so I, you know, I, just reading, especially like in high school, you know, hand, hand washing, sanitizing in cafeteria. How does a parent really know unless they actually walk through the school every day with their student and see this stuff firsthand? So, um, that would be my only really comment about this is I think this should be geared more to, um, the student.
Uh, Miranda?
Um, Dr. Lance, thank you so much. I just got one clarifying question and it's really from my own learning, to be honest. Are we measuring perception because perception is correlated to confidence? Like I'm trying to understand the question we're asking and why we're measuring as relates to perception. And how come, how do we use perception data to drive change?
Well, the, is an indirect measure.
Yeah.
For sure. Um, but it's kind of, it's a convenient way of, of getting the information. And it was, it was decided, um, in collaboration, when the survey was being constructed, in collaboration with the district board and myself, that, um, we would survey the parents because people, number one, it's, it's easier, right? Cause we have their email addresses and, um, we, we, um, we have that information. But also, um, yeah, I mean, perception surveys are, are common. It's not as good, obviously, as like being in the building and having some hard data where you can see. Um, it's just hard to get that data sometimes, right? But, um, yeah, it, it's a secondary, it's a kind of an indirect look at what's happening.
That's fair. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Lauren? No further questions. Patrick?
And I just think there's, there's just a wealth of data here, in particular, the trend data and the longitudinal data that we see around the trends with the heat maps, where we see the differences between March to April. It's, it's striking to me that we saw a substantial difference in mask, uh, compliance at the high school level and, and the perception of that between March and April. Yet the teacher reinforced proper covering scores actually went up in, um, in terms of the things that, that, that people needed to be addressed. I, I don't know whether that is, uh, maybe I don't understand the, the way the question was being asked. Does that mean that more people are saying that this needs to happen?
No, I think, let me go to the items here so I can pull it up.
I, I, it's in the, uh, it's in your chart, so it's not in the, the presentation.
Oh, okay.
Here, but it was, it was the teacher reinforces coverings and it was a, it was marked in blue. And it's, um, it's, you know, at the, at the high school level, it's minus four, minus four, minus nine percent in that, uh, in that, that category. I assume that that is the, it's the change in percent of parents who selected.
Yeah, from the checkbox list.
From the checkbox list.
That's right.
And so it means that fewer people actually selected that checkbox.
Right.
In, in that, in that secondary period in, in April. Yet our scores around the teacher or around the, the mask compliance went down substantially, like more than 20%. The scores went down between March and April. So, I mean, maybe it's not, I, I, maybe they, they don't hold the teachers accountable anymore. I, I,
Yeah, that, that's, that's a tricky one because you will see inconsistencies sometimes like that, especially when, if you're looking at the building level or the grade level. Was, was that, was that all of, was that the grade band?
It was grade band.
Okay.
And I was looking at the grade band in the, uh, in the mass compliance as well. I mean, there's just some interesting correlations that can be, that can be determined from this.
Sure.
That, that ultimately the question is that how do we action this data? Um, and I think that there's tremendous information that you've got here, but it's, it, we may want to, wo- work with Dr. Lance on how to interpret this information for our, uh, for our, our, our teachers and for our, I'm sorry, and for our administrators. Cause there is, there's, I suspect there's a lot of art that goes into the interpretation of this.
At the very least with the error rates, yeah. That's true.
Yeah, I, I, if we were to implement the students in this, uh, survey process, would that skew our ability to compare period over period? Or would we?
It would add a layer of error for sure.
Okay.
But if we didn't, you know, going forward, every time, obviously, we'd have, we didn't change the items. Be a long-term strategy, but to compare it to this, it would be a, a layer of error. I'm not sure how to quantify that error, maybe it is.
So it sounds like the, the, the best approach is to lock in the questions and the data that you're trying to gather and provide consistency over time. So you can measure it longitudinally, longitudinally over time in that process.
Yeah.
And, and you're suggesting that we don't do it any more frequently than monthly?
Yes.
Okay. And so we will, if we were to take that kind of approach, we only have a few, a few chances left this year to be able to look at this, but that data could help inform us for both correlating against the conditions on the ground. In other words, the number of cases that we have in the school, the number of quarantines, the spread that we're seeing or not seeing. And then also we can use that data to help influence us for the, the, our fault, uh, uh, process. So I, I, I think this is a good activity. Do, do you believe that this type of longitudinal continuous survey is something that's valuable to give us data to, to be able to, to understand those perceptions?
Yeah.
Is this, are we, are we, are we wasting our time and our, our, our money and our communities effort?
I don't believe so. I, I think if done consistently and with the, uh, implementing the recommendations that come out of this meeting, um, I think valuable data can, can come out of it, especially over time as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a good thing to have. It would be nice if we could get more response rate. But I think you're, um, when you said that it's probably not as many moderate opinions, you tend to get the people who are very dissatisfied and the people who are very satisfied. You know, those are the people who tend to fill those things out. I'm really happy, I'm really unhappy.
Skewed to the unhappy.
I don't know. I always fill out the surveys when I'm really happy to, to, um, to get that, you know, so they can get that view. Cause I know that's, but I also like the recommendations for trying to get better responses, more responses. Those are really good. Thank you so much. This was very interesting.
President McQuaid, can I just?
Yes.
Add one more thing. You know, I think separately outside of this conversation, whether it's at the board workshop or we need to digest some of this data, because there's a lot of data here. But I would just say to Superintendent Merritt, to, you know, as you talk to your building administrator, so again, I'm just looking at all the middle schools and looking at, you know, where are trends? Where are some good things happening? Where are some things that need attention? And so as a building administrator in one of these middle schools, so I'm looking and I won't mention the school, bathroom cleanliness has gone down and the, this is middle school, so they are eating lunch. So six feet distancing while eating has gone down with masks. So maybe those are places that administrators walk through and verify. And if the administrators or staff or you or anybody else that's going into these buildings to say, ah, okay, here's an opportunity for improvement. I see it. Just a little fix and we can tackle this. If you are finding repeatedly that your observations are not in line with what we're getting, I think that's a separate conversation too. That's all.
All right. Does anybody have anything else? All right. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Take care.
All right. Now we are on letter E, citizens' comments. I don't have any, um, comments. Does anybody here want to make a comment? All right. Uh, we will move to F, which is action items discussion. So we have action item 210460, consider approval of a resolution for a cooperative education program agreement between Livonia Public Schools and Plymouth Canton Community Schools for the 2021, 2022 school year. First and final reading is action item 210460. This was explained in board notes. Does anybody have a question about this? We generally do, we do this every year. So will we be doing this at a later time for Wayne Westland?
Yes.
Okay. Cause that's the other one we usually have a cooperative agreement with is Wayne Westland.
I, I do have a question.
Okay.
Um, roughly how many students does this serve? You know, just, I, I don't know.
I have to get that number back for you.
Okay.
So this is a career technical education program. So for courses that we don't provide here in our school, has an opportunity for, um, the students to take it there, but I can get a total number of students involved.
Thank you.
Did you want, um, Livonia and the, the number for Wayne Westland?
Yeah, that would be great. Yes, please.
Okay. So is there another question? I am looking for a motion.
President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for cooperative education agreement, education program agreement between Livonia Public Schools and Plymouth Canton Community Schools for the 2021, 2022 school year. This is a first and final reading and the action item number is 210460.
All right, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by member Kehoe and seconded by member Wilson, that we consider approval of a resolution for a cooperative education program agreement between Livonia Public Schools and Plymouth Canton Community Schools for the 2021, 2022 school year. First and final reading. Action item 210460. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. All right. Passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Uh, now we are on to future agenda topics. If any, does anybody have a future agenda topic that they would like to bring up?
Nothing new.
All right.
You don't already have.
Um, I do, I have a, a brief discussion that I, I thought of, um, after we got our agendas together. So at our last meeting, we talked about the M A S B board governance, um, standards and, um, whether we would want to adopt them. And so what I would like to, to know from people is, number one, if we would like to have some time set aside at the next couple of meetings that we have, like near the end, to have a discussion about these. So in order to make it not too long, um, I was thinking we could go through, for instance, we could do the board of education governance standards, the principles for, for boards, you know, at one point. And then have a separate discussion later for the, uh, principles for individual school board members. And then at the end of that, we could decide if we are wanting to actually adopt them or not. So I was just looking for people's ideas of how you would like to, or did you want a separate workshop to just discuss this?
Do you think it'd be too time consuming to do both of them together rather than splitting them between two different meetings?
Um, I don't know.
Or do you think it'd be too confusing?
I don't think it would be confusing. Um, I'm just wondering if, um, it would become long at the end of a meeting, um, if we tried to get too much done. I, I don't know.
I guess I'd look at the, at the schedule. I mean, we're at 10 o'clock right now. So if you've got a, a long board meeting, then we want to keep it short. If you've got a board meeting that we're ending at, uh, at, at 7:30, then we could discuss both of them.
Okay, have we? Remind me of when we left at 7:30?
We got one that we got done before eight o'clock.
Yes.
When was that?
Uh, before COVID.
Yeah.
Okay, well, all right. All right. Um, does anybody else have any ideas on this, any discussion?
You know, one of the things I would suggest is for all of us to look that over and email you pieces with our reflections.
Yeah.
So some initial thoughts, so we don't lose those. And then you could capture those thoughts and then add a meeting where we do have some time, you can pull those out. And we can have a discussion on the first part. And to Patrick's point, if we have time, we can do the second part as well.
Okay, I, I just don't want to lose that we're going to do this.
Yeah.
So I will remind everybody that we need to get this, we'll set a time limit on it so that we don't just, in six months, we say, oh yeah, we wanted to do that. Um, and we didn't. So, all right, I will remind people to do this.
And we just plugged it into the bottom of the draft calendar.
All right. Okay, so, um, follow-up board questions. So from our prior meeting, where'd they go? We had, from our last meeting, we had, uh, proposals are available. We wanted, we were asking about the student athlete COVID testing and we got that information.
Yes.
And that program is running. Uh, then we wanted to know a comparison of last year's spring attendance rates. And we discussed that a bit earlier during the meeting tonight. Kurt is still working at.
I think that, did we hear that Kurt, that you can't get that information?
That's what I understand, yes. Mark, I'm going to check with technology. There might be a way, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a way that we can, from now on, every year, keep some type of record of that?
That's the question that Anupam asked and I'm going to check into that as well.
Yeah.
All right, and then there was one from our Saturday workshop that I wrote down. I couldn't read my writing. When I got home, I think it was your, your question, Patrick? Do you remember it?
If you can show me your writing, I can, I can probably remember it, but Saturday was like a month ago.
It was actually a few days.
It's a month.
All right, and then, from tonight, we had, we wanted to know about how many students are being served by the cooperative agreements between Livonia and Wayne Westland?
And then we also wanted to know our, our current attendance rate, because we know how many are quarantined or are, are the starter of their quarantine, but we don't know how many, what our absentee rate is on a given day. And that's really important to us because it's both the number of quarantined students as well as the students that might be sick for some other reason, or those students that are not coming to school for whatever reason.
All right. And did anybody have anything I did not get down?
Where, where do we leave the, the last conversation? Was it from the data that was presented? Was it that Ms. Merritt is going to work with the building administrators to come back with improvement plan, basically, in, in key areas, what those key areas are and, and then send that out to the board? Is that where we landed?
Yeah, and, and the other piece I was just suggesting, and it doesn't have to be implemented, but I'd like some time to go through all of the different, Dr. Lance gave us a lot of data. And so when you dug into the hyperlinks, there was a lot to look at. So if we find something or have any aha moments or questions, we can email them to President McQuine.
Got you. And then my last question on that is the month? We, we talked about implementing this on a monthly basis. Is that something that we need to solidify tonight? Like, yes, we're going to do this on a monthly basis and then set the date for when that happens every month?
That's a good question.
That would be helpful.
I, I would think so. So we're in April right now. So then we would talk May and June?
Correct.
Question, question on when does the K-12 survey data close? I want to just make sure we don't have overlap. I know we have two surveys going out now in April.
Oh.
Yeah, I appreciate you asking that. The, there's an equity survey that will be going out to all families this week. That's for the equity audit work that's happening with Hanover on April twenty-sixth through May tenth, which actually has been pushed back. That's our K-12 Insights survey for all families, all staff, students, sixth through twelfth grade, which also does give us some opportunity too, to tie some ideas into that survey if we would like to. I heard a lot tonight about surveying students and there's a lot that goes into that. You need to find the right time to do it and, and make sure students know what to expect and have a good process there. So that's what the timeline looks like for the two major surveys for the rest of this month.
So would maybe the week of May seventeenth? And I think I heard Dr. Lance suggest having the survey open two weeks. Maybe the seventeenth through the twenty-eighth, where?
Yeah, yeah.
It would allow us to capture the seniors. What was that, Patrick? Because they would allow us to capture the seniors, because I think the seniors are gone at the end of May, right? Right.
Yeah, about that.
And with the, with a reminder, so if we're keeping it open for two weeks, after a week, send another reminder.
That would be our last survey for the school year.
Well, June, I think if, if we're talking about doing June, that would be the last one.
Pardon me?
If we're talking about doing May and June, then June would be the last one.
Does it make sense to do one in June, a month later, when you're already out of school?
I'm just, yeah, I don't know. That's a good decision. I just heard May and June.
I know, I guess that.
What are the May dates again?
Seventeenth to twenty-eight.
Seventeenth, yeah, so that doesn't give us a whole lot of time in June.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the thought for May was if we could do it at the beginning of May, you know, but with two other surveys going out.
What was the timeframe for the K-12 Insight?
April twenty-sixth through May tenth.
Yeah, so you'd have to turn around and do it immediately right after May.
And a lot of times, depending on response rate for that, we often add an extra week to the end of that to make sure we're capturing as much as possible with that survey as well. I'm not saying we're going to, but we have in past years.
Yeah, because you want to make sure you get as much data from that as you can.
Absolutely, because that's our angle. We're, we have a lot of comparison data from that as well.
I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, if we end up only doing one more survey, if that's fine, right? That gives us three data points. And once again, you know, hopefully we'll see a, a increase. And that also, what I do like about that timeline is it does give the building administrators time to make adjustments. And then hopefully we can see those adjustments on that survey and see the numbers go up. So, you know, and then ultimately, we have three data points that we can look to for fall, for fall planning, fall safety planning. So in short, I like the seventeenth through the twenty-eighth, most likely as our last survey, unless.
Well, when does school get out?
June eleventh.
June eleventh, yeah.
We all know. Somebody's counting down.
Said the whole auditorium. Yeah, I just, I mean, if you did it a month later and you did it on May, or I'm sorry, June eighteenth, I don't know. At that point, I don't think you have accuracy.
Right, I'm okay with just doing one more in May. I think that gives us, to Sean's point, that gives us three good data points.
Yeah.
What I also heard though, which I think will be valuable, since Dr. Lance suggested, suggests doing the same questions in the survey for May to the parent. But what I just heard Nick say, we could actually, as we're crafting this survey for K-12, the student component, we could ask the similar questions as a part of that to the students.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we do still have the flexibility to do that. We'd have to work quickly to get that instrument developed. But, um, yeah, we can definitely do that and I think that would be efficient.
Right.
That's a very suggestion, Mike.
To that point, Superintendent Merritt, can I suggest that we ask Dr. Lance for a couple of questions and how the responses should be formulated? So he can look at that data and put it along with ours, so we're, we're having the same mindset.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
May I ask a question for clarity? Are there any barriers or limitations to surveying students? Like if it were just folks on a high school students, middle school students, like just from an age perspective? This is really a question for Superintendent Merritt.
Yep.
Are there any barriers?
We only survey our sixth through twelfth students as a part of this process.
We've, we've been doing that survey for a long time, correct?
We, this would be either the third or fourth year we've had the student component to that. There's, I wouldn't say there's barriers, there's challenges, because you need to find time on the school day, you need to make sure that there's something built in where students can easily access it with one click and have the time to take it. So we always put process behind it to give all students a chance to take it.
I did like the Snapchat option.
Yeah, it's innovative.
TikTok.
Yeah.
TikTok survey responses.
That's it.
There you go.
Did I all answer it back?
Exactly. They'd all be videos.
Videos, you'd be like, I'm not sure what the answer is right here. It's adorable.
All right, does anybody have anything else?
Just want to confirm and we can announce closed session on April twenty-seventh before our next board meeting, six o'clock. And an adjustment to the policy committee to begin a half hour earlier than.
Yes, so, um, yes, I kind of mentioned it during my, my policy thing, but, so policy will be met at five o'clock and the twenty-seventh. Mr. Tiskowitz already sent out an updated invitation to the policy committee members. And then there will be a closed session at six o'clock. It will be here. There will be signs up to get people to the room. The twenty-seventh, and that is for negotiations.
Okay, thank you.
And if that is it, uh, we have come the end of our agenda and we will be adjourning. It is ten sixteen.